This is WFPRLP Franklin on 102.9 FM.
Really didn't have to do that. It was quiet anyway. Okay, good evening. Time being seven o'clock. I call the June 4th, 2025 meeting of the Franklin Town Council to order. At this time, we ask you to join us in a moment of silence as we remember Kresha Patel and her mother Minaban Patel, who tragically lost their lives in a recent accident on Grove Street. May we keep their family and loved ones in our thoughts during this incredibly difficult time. Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the one which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. A note to all residents. All citizens are welcome to attend public meetings in person. To view the live stream meeting remotely, citizens are encouraged to watch the live stream on the Franklin Town Hall TV YouTube channel or the live broadcast on Comcast Channel 9 and Verizon Channel 29. Meetings are also archived by Franklin TV on the Franklin Town Hall TV YouTube channel and again shown on repeat on Comcast Channel 9 and Verizon Channel 29 for those who missed the live meeting. To listen to the meeting remotely, citizens may call in using this number, 929-205-6099. And this will not permit participation in the meeting, to participate in the meeting remotely. Citizens are able to join the Zoom webinar using Zoom webinar ID 817-0446-2330. Again, the webinar ID 817-0446-2330. Any participants who wish to speak during the webinar must enter their full name and email address when joining the webinar. All participants will be automatically muted upon joining the webinar. In order to speak, participants who have entered full name and email address will need to select the raise hand function to request to be unmuted. All speakers will be required to state their full name and street address before commenting. Upcoming events? We have a few. Franklin's Second Annual Porch Fest will be taking place on Saturday, June 7th, from 12 to 6:00 in the Franklin Cultural District. Musicians and bands of all genres will be performing at the Town Common, Library, Historical Museum, and many residents' porches throughout the district. This family-friendly event is also the perfect opportunity to check out our local shops and restaurants. For more information, including event map and schedule, please visit franklennporchfest.info. In the rain date, since we'll have the 12th Saturday in a row, it's June 8th, Sunday. The Franklin Farmers Market season kicks off this Friday, June 6th, on the Town Common. Start by Fridays from 2:00 to 6:00, running June through October. The town of Franklin is seeking poets and writers to contribute original works focused on mental health healing and positivity for Overdose Awareness Day on August 31st. The National Suicide Awareness Month in September. For additional information, please visit the Acts, Culture, and Creative Economy page on our website. Next, under comments from the chair, Town Clerk Nancy Donello.
Good evening. Nancy Donello, here's Town Clerk. So, we had our special election last night for a Prop 2.5, and I was able to finalize the numbers late today. So, there was a slight change because of the hand counts. So, we have a total yes of 5,107, a total no of 5,303, for a total votes cast of 10,414. Total registered voters, 25,863, leaving us a 40% turnout. I want to take this opportunity to thank, a very special thank you to all of our election workers, our wardens, our police, our DPW, facilities, and all of the voters that turned out to vote. I thank you. That's all, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Okay, moving on. Citizens' comments. Citizens are welcome to express their views for up to three minutes on a matter that is not on the agenda. In compliance with General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 20, the open meeting law, the council cannot engage in a dialogue or comment on a matter raised during citizens' comments. The town council may ask the town administrator to review the matter. Nothing herein shall prevent the town administrator from correcting a misstatement of fact during citizens' comments. Is there any citizen in council chambers that would like to speak on an item not on tonight's agenda? Name and address, please.
Hi, I'm Arielle Shearer, 66th Road. It's somewhat tangential, but it's about procedure. I don't really always watch these meetings. I have figured out lately how to download them, get a transcript, and then you get the summarized version. So, I'd like to be very clear that I'm not speaking to what has actually happened in this room, but rather on people's perceptions and how they've been expressing what's been happening in this room. This is a comment intended to help us move forward productively. There's been a lot of discussion about respect lately, and in the interest of keeping that a two-way street, which both means respecting how we, when we speak to each other, but also respecting each other's time and how we use it, I'd like to ask the council to consider that when people come forward with a proposal on how to modify something that's been discussed by the council, for instance, a budget, that they not just present the changes that they would make, but also how those changes impact the rest of the documents. So, for instance, if somebody wanted to have a line item removed from that budget, that they also come forward with a fully balanced budget, because this would really promote respect in the sense that the proposed changes and the resulting impacts would both be reflected there, and it would ensure that those suggestions can meaningfully be considered in context and allow those making the suggestions a better understanding of how interconnected the decisions can be. I believe it's a fair and reasonable expectation before we ask you and you to consider our proposals.
Thank you. Is there? Please, come forward. Name and address, please. You can turn that so you don't have to.
I'm Reverend Dorian Otten, 183 Main Street. I'm the pastor at Franklin Federated Church, and I just wanted to share publicly a letter written to Chief Lynch and the officers of the Franklin Police Department. The social justice team of the Franklin Federated Church is writing to formally commend your ongoing dedication to your mission to enhance the quality of life in Franklin while maintaining order and protecting the people in our community. Your commitment to enforcing the law with professionalism, integrity, and respect for the rights of all individuals sets a worthy example of public service that we admire and wish to acknowledge. In these turbulent political times, where respect for the rule of law is being abandoned by some, we applaud your dedication to upholding the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts in our community. We have become increasingly concerned over the past few months for the well-being of immigrants who have come to the United States seeking an education, viable employment, and in many cases asylum. Since taking office on January 20th, the executive branch of our national government has expedited the removal of immigrants without due process and has permitted immigration enforcement activity at previously protected sensitive locations. The administration has also sought to rely on local law enforcement agencies as a force multiplier. In regards to immigration enforcement in Massachusetts, we understand that Massachusetts law enforcement agencies are bound to continue to follow the 2017 Supreme Judicial Court decision, Lund versus Commonwealth, and that under Massachusetts law, there is no statutory or common law authority permitting state or local law enforcement officers to detain individuals solely based on federal civil immigration detainer per legal advisory of the Massachusetts Chiefs of Police Association. And third, unless the Supreme Court Judicial Court of Massachusetts overturns Lund versus Commonwealth decision or the state legislature enacts new laws, the Franklin Police Department will continue to follow the edicts provided in the Lund decision. We realize that immigration enforcement is a complicated issue for communities and for the police agencies that serve them. Thank you again, Chief Lynch and Franklin Police Department, for your service and continued efforts to ensure our community is safe and just. We deeply appreciate the work you do. Warm regards to the social justice team of Franklin Federated Church.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in council chambers that would like to speak on an item not on tonight's agenda? Okay, seeing no one in council chambers, is there anyone out there in Zoom land that would like to speak on an item not on tonight's agenda? Okay, moving on. Our next item on the agenda is approval of minutes. I entertain a motion to approve the minutes from May 7th, 2025.
So moved.
Motion and a second. Discussion, additions, deletions. Seeing none, the vote will come on the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I now entertain a motion to approve the minutes from May 21st, 2025.
So moved.
Motion and a second. Discussion, additions, deletions. Seeing none, the vote will come on the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, moving on. Proclamations and recognitions. We have none this evening and no appointments. We do have a public hearing, and it's a continuation of the second. May, yeah, May 22nd, public hearing on the town budget. And I first just want to say, good evening, everybody. Thank you for being here. It's nice to have a full house in council chambers. We'll begin this evening with a continuation of the public hearing of FY '26 budget. This is an open hearing for anyone to offer comments. But before we go to the public, I want to offer a brief statement and then turn it over to the town administrator to go through the budget reduction proposal. After last night's failed override of Proposition 2.5, it is now the responsibility of the town council to make the necessary adjustments to balance the town's FY '26 budget. The Option B proposal that the town administrator will speak to, balance the budget with the cuts we told the community would be in. We want the community to know that we have not taken this situation lightly. Over the past nine months, the Joint Budget Subcommittee, the town administrator, the superintendent of schools, hosted a year-long transparent budget process in an effort to walk the community through the entire operating budget. We held nine meetings over the course of seven months. We received an incredible amount of feedback and engagement from the community. We clearly articulated to the community what was at stake. Even with knowledge of the consequences of another failed override, a majority of Franklin voters chose to vote no. It is my personal belief, we need to make the exact cuts we said we were going to make to ensure we follow through with what we said we would do. For those who have suggested we can always find money, I hope you realize, this evening, there is no way to save all the services that were on the menu of the council. While these decisions will undoubtedly have an impact on services and staffing across all departments, our goal remains to manage this process with transparency, fairness, and fiscal responsibility. We remain committed to communicating with residents, department heads, and stakeholders as we move forward. We appreciate your continued engagement and support as we navigate these challenges together. With that, I'm going to pass it on to Town Administrator Jamie Helen.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and through you to the council and all the folks here in the chamber and watching home on YouTube and on Zoom. I got three slides. I'm just going to walk through and kind of cut to the chase with the cuts that are proposed, and then I'm actually not going to do just the slides, but I'm actually going to also do the document that we handed out that shows the comparison, just so that we give everybody two opportunities to see and make sure everybody understands. We did post the material early at noon today. I know that some people may be seeing it for the first time, so I just want to walk through it in two different formats so everybody understands exactly why and what is happening. And then I know, Mr. Chairman, I think the police chief and the fire chief and the superintendent are going to come up at some point, and I think the library director wants to make a quick statement, so. Okay, so, just getting right to it. If folks look up at the screen, we've had handouts over here. This is not a chart that we handed out, but I wanted to make sure I illustrated very clearly the very complicated math that is required to balance a budget. To your comments, Mr. Chairman, what's reflected on the screen is pretty much exactly what we said we were going to do on the list of cuts that we put out to the community earlier this year during the Joint Budget Subcommittee process. What we've done here is done actuals. Again, the actuals are also in the comparison chart that was handed out over here on the table, but I'm just going to start at the top, Account 141. The Board of Assessors account would be reduced 61,737. That is a vacant administrative assistant position that the elected Board of Assessors requested, but we were very clear with everybody, if the override didn't pass, that would come off of their account. So, that's being reduced. Facilities, this is the redistricting savings. We've talked about this, you know, a hundred ways from Sunday. These were the savings of 4,928. That was the exact number that was presented to the community earlier. We supported this because 80-plus percent of the facilities budget is actually school-related, and we were hoping, because of inflation, that we could restore some of the services that were in the facilities department that had been kind of lost through, over the last few years, due to higher electricity costs, utility costs, cleaning supplies, and all the other issues. Most of that budget, I would say two-thirds of it, are cleaning supplies, electricity, stormwater, water sewer, all sorts of basic costs, lights for all of our school and town facilities. So, that would be reduced under this proposal. As illustrated in the chart, there would be a reduction of two firefighters in Account 210, which, based on the collective bargaining agreement on the lowest seniority individuals, the salary, education incentive, and all the other incidentals would equal 178,944. Folks may say, well, wait, that's a little lower. That's because down below in benefits, okay, those two firefighters would also accommodate for a benefits loss, okay? So, down here is where you end up making up the additional revenue that gets closer to 250. And I made this very clear. You know, most of those numbers that I put out earlier in the year weren't exact, weren't a dollar-for-dollar exact. They were rounded up to illustrate. For folks that are new to this, that are coming to this and didn't come to any of the sessions, I did put up a menu of cuts that would be proposed, and those menu of cuts far exceeded what the actual budget deficit would be if the override didn't pass. And I did that for a reason. The superintendent and I were both in unison in support of not putting specific names out there, and so that would be cut under that. That also, we'll get down to this below, reducing the third ambulance. We will see the impact of that on our revenue sources down below. Here's the reduction in the two police officers at 218,303. Again, those are the exact numbers on the lowest two people in the collective bargaining agreement, and then again, the benefits are down below. Both the chiefs are going to speak to this a little bit later on. Franklin Public Schools, as we told the public, 54%. This is just Account 300. 54% of the entire budget is Account 300, and I made an assumption in there that we told the public that if the override were to not pass, the 54% reduction, their portion of the budget would be reduced by 2.085 million, and that number's reflected right here. Same thing with the DPW. We published a cut list of 400,000. I know the material is on the website. It's two and a half pages long, so I didn't publish it up here, but those are roads, tree trimming, crosswalk painting, sidewalk maintenance, road repairs, a whole series of services that people request throughout the community. That list is online for a very detailed list. Again, it's two and a half pages long, so I didn't want to publish it right up here on the slides, but people can look at it online, or we can ask the DPW later for a little more detail. $50,000 to the library. I know the library director will get up and speak to the impact in a few minutes. That was, again, the number we published. That was exactly what we said we were going to do, so that number is here, and that's in the proposed cuts. Account 910, OPEB, which would reduce the account by 350,000. You know, this is very painful. I know that this can't compete with staff, teachers, firefighters, and police officers. However, other post-employment benefits is actually the way this community is going. It's a savings bank that is required by state law to prepare the community for the liability of retiree health insurance for our teachers, for our firefighters, for our municipal staff, for our police officers. So, many people have said to me, what is that? And even some people that don't know what it is, even our public employees said, oh, I should probably pay attention to that more. I said, every March, you can do an actuarial with Dan Sherman. You hear him. I do want to say, this is two years in a row, and I believe we've now reduced that line item by over 800,000. So, in this budget proposal tonight, we are starting back at 100,000 contribution. And then just for the public's edification, in case they don't know, each year, our policy increases that 50,000, 50,000 each fiscal year. So, FY '26 would be 100, FY '27 would be 150, FY '28 would be 200, and so forth and so on. While this may not seem important, it is extremely important. It relates to our bond rating, and it also relates to our liability on the community. The good news is, if there is a silver lining, and all of you know this because you've been here a while, but just for the audience to make sure they understand how important this is, even at our actuaryo this year, with all of the work the council and the town staff have done on this for several years, or actually probably 10 years, maybe 10, 15 years now, the town of Franklin is in the top 10 or 15% of most prepared communities in Massachusetts. We hear from our actuarial, most communities haven't saved anything. So, we do have a very good trust fund. We do earn interest on that. Those returns have been very good for some years. Obviously, with rocky times possibly coming economically, that might change a little, but I do feel, at least, this is something to be able to save some of the cuts. This was an important piece to put in there, but I do want to warn the community, going in the future, we really cannot at all drop that line item. So, this really hampers our budget ability in future. So this really hampers our budgetability in future years to make any moves mid-year if there's any cuts that have to happen. So this is a big and important thing. And then the benefits down here for the municipal side is about 118,000, and that is for the reduction of the staff that you see here. I do also want to note some of the staff that are on here that will be laid off under the proposal. A couple of people didn't have healthcare. One individual will likely move to a retiree system. So this number is an actual calculation from the Human Resources Department on the actual people that are being laid off and what that impact will be. So that's an accurate and detailed number. I'd also said municipal staff reductions. And so what we are proposing is to reduce one position in my office, reduce the administrative assistant position. Just to be clear, while that may seem, you know, like an administrative assistant position, that individual has been helping us with our social media. He actually has a degree in communications. So very depressingly, after we laid off the position for Communications Director that the schools in town were sharing, we now will probably have to stop, we probably will shut down, or at least make notes on our social media pages, that there will be no longer any posts because we won't have any staff capacity to do really a lot of communications. We may be able to do a little bit, but with the workload on us, I don't know how much we're going to be able to do, and I want to be transparent with people. You know, our social media and communications, potentially the newsletter, website updates, and a variety of other services, customer service, picking up the phone, there will now only be three people in my office. So if Amy and myself or Julie are out, you know, we may have to shut the door for a few hours, you know, and people won't be able to come in. So while it seems like a low amount of money, there actually is an impact that will be there, and that is 42,107. That layoff would take place on October 1st. The second reduction is eliminate the Assistant to the Community Development Director position. Again, obviously, or as it says on the slide, on October 1st, that would be a reduction of $60,962. I just, again, want to make it clear, while many people in the community may not know what this does, this was a critical staff member to try to support our staff in implementing a lot of the master plan goals or other zoning by law priorities and a lot of the EDC work. So while it may not seem like the most important thing relative to what we're talking about, I have to be very clear that the recently approved master plan, in addition to a lot of other zoning projects or economic development projects, and particularly affordable housing projects, which this person oversees all of our affordable housing SHI index for our 40B percentage, they do all the lottery for all of our rental units in town, that position will be eliminated. I'm going to tell you right now, things are going to go very, very slow relative to lotteries for affordable units and a variety of other work. That is only going to be exacerbated right now by the fact that our Community Development Director, Brian Tabaner, retired last week, and we had to repost for the position because the candidate pool was not good on the first round. So we're going out for a second round, and our conservation agent is on maternity leave. So people can't expect the phones to not get picked up as quickly or as often. Customer service will certainly downgrade, and certainly the ability for us to process applications and a variety of other permits downstairs in the permitting office is certainly going to decrease. We're proposing in here an additional 63,329 to the DPW to eliminate all summer help. I know for many of you that have lived in town for a long time, we have success stories like Derek Adams, who's now one of our superintendents. He started as a summer help, became one of our best full-time employees at the DPW. I can't see if Derek's back there, but he might be. That's a great story. But the summer help will be eliminated completely. We have an internship program, for a mentorship program, for a mechanic, that will also be eliminated. So everybody, as of July 1st this year, if this budget is approved, all of our summer help for the DPW will be laid off. So if people see growth on trails, if they see weed whacking or lawn mowing, some trimming, you know, some of the cleaner things in town, some of the sidewalks, a lot of our younger people go on weed whack some of the sidewalks with the growth that comes through, you can definitely expect your sidewalks to have more grass growing throughout all of that. The Senior Center, we are proposing to lay off the LPN as of 10, actually, that should say 71, at 26,164. I know this was a proposal last year. We all have immense amount of respect for Trish. However, we do have a registered nurse down there, and as we try to work through the budget cuts, as requested by the Joint Budget Subcommittee and many stakeholders, we tried to put cuts in place that were shared across the board, and we also tried to make reductions that tried to do the best we can to offset revenues, regulatory compliance, and some of the other issues. If you go back and read, and if nobody in here has read, I know all of you on the council tab, I would implore anybody that's coming into this for the first time, please read the letter that the department heads wrote in December. I understand the perception that some people may have of some of our departments, and again, I know that that can't compete with a certain type of employees or others. However, we are now down to the bone and into the bone, where any other further cuts beyond this, for most of our departments, will mean a pretty significant risk to our state and federal regulatory compliance, inspections, and a variety of other legally required services like procurement or wetlands delineations and a variety of other things that we just have to do, staffing the planning boards, staffing the zoning board of appeals. All of our boards and committees have some level of staff and expenses associated with them. There's only so much we can do, and I think that's why you also see on here us going into the DPW further, because ultimately, at some point, it's going to impact the DPW probably as much as anybody else on further cuts than that. So the total reductions from that menu are 4,645,000, right over here where the pointer is. So the override that lost was 3.862 million. So I put the word, for lack of a better word, a little bit of a surplus. So that's 201,828 more than we needed to cut. And I wanted to illustrate this very clearly, and I hope everybody follows along. But with the loss of the third ambulance, we also are going to lose roughly around a half a million dollars in ambulance revenue that will go to other towns who are going to call, come to our community for mutual aid. Okay? We've talked about this on mutual aid. I mean, I don't know how many times. I know the chief will talk about it one more time. So then we also had some savings from the original budget on debt and interest due to the fire truck. One of the very small positives this year was when we went out to borrow the money for the fire truck, our AAA bond rating got us a 3% interest rate. That is exceptionally low right now. I appreciate the snaps. That was very good to get a 3% interest rate, but we were able to save $12,114. If you add in also a new revenue source, the Senate Ways and Means budget into the budget proposal, we have an additional 281,273,000. That is not all Chapter 70 increases. That is also unrestricted general government aid, known as UGA. And so we are using the Senate numbers, which were slightly higher than the House. I'd be remiss if I did not point out, we've never done this before, except for last year. We've always used the final house, the final state budget numbers in November to autocorrect our budget in November. Due to the cuts that we're looking at last year and the fiscal situation, we added in the Senate Ways and Means number as well last year for the first time. And however, when the final budget was signed by the governor, it actually came in $39,000 lower than we anticipated. So I do celebrate this. I thank Senator Roush and Rep. Roy for supporting our communities. They've done a great job in trying to deal with these things. Just want to make sure everybody's aware, by the time we get to November and we get a final state budget, we could certainly be facing a little bit of a numbers game where we may have to make up for that in the middle of the year. So then you look at that, and that's about a $495,000 additional revenue or savings, but we did that, obviously, because the ambulance is estimated to be about a half a million dollars in revenue loss. This really is important. So this chart right here brings before you tonight a fully balanced budget going into FY '26. The last thing I'll say is a plug for folks who are tuning in for the first time. You know, just because we assume these revenues are going to be there does not mean they come in. Like any budget, you project and estimate to the best of your ability what those revenues are. In a minute, we'll talk about the economy, but that is the sheet, and I will go through the other comparison in a minute. To the individual who spoke, I know they're probably going to want more details, but to the individual that spoke, we're going to speak about some of the impact. So I want to note that the Joint Budget Subcommittee laid out a menu of options and cuts earlier in the year. The menu of the reductions was actually higher than what the deficit was, and we did that because we didn't know where all of these numbers would exactly be come this time. At this time, the administration is not recommending the use of $450,206 in one-time revenues that are still in the MECS stabilization fund. The MECS stabilization fund authorizes you to help with the Regional Dispatch Center, but the legislation also authorizes the council to be able to use those for police and fire capital or operating budget expenses. This may be a way that we use this money this year in the capital program. I don't know. But I think, as the superintendent has clearly stated, the school committee, all of you, the joint budget, we've been using one-time revenues for three or four fiscal years over the last seven years. And just like the town of Natick this year, when they had their override, they were using multiple millions of dollars in one-time revenues each year. Using one-time revenues continues to exacerbate the exact problem we are trying to fix. And so if you add that money into the budget, you are already a half a million dollars in deficit going into FY '27. So I just label that up there to just say that's our staff proposal. Obviously, this discretion is within the community and the council to do what they choose. I know the superintendent will be called on later, as we said, to talk about the proposed cuts or reductions in situations to Franklin Public Schools. The loss of the two police officers associated benefits, the chief will speak to that in a little bit. The loss of the paramedics, the chief will speak to that in a few moments. And the loss of the DPW expenses, as we said, will be road repairs, tree trimming, trail maintenance, school grounds, and a lot more. People can look online for that list of cuts. The library expenses will be cut 50,000. I'm told by the library director that that means the library will be potentially closed on Sundays. Somebody asked me that, well, what's our remaining amount over MAR, which is state requirement? 34,591. I want to make sure I'm very clear with people. Right now, the federal government is looking at slashing an exorbitant amount of cuts to public libraries across the country. The Board of Library Commissioners for the state, and I think Felicia knows this, have been extraordinarily active, very concerned about what that lost aid from the feds to the state are going to be. And so I don't know in the next two fiscal years where this is going to go. Now, MAR is a very antiquated formula. It's like 100 years old. Maybe finally, the state will renovate, will reevaluate it. But we have to be also careful that when the state's going to reevaluate and change possibly a policy on that, just like the Chapter 70 Commission that is going to be going on in about a year, we don't know what that formula means for Franklin. So we're a little in the dark if anything happens. That's a very narrow amount. That's a very, very small amount of wiggle room to ensure that we do not ever fall under MAR again for our library, because as we discussed many times, the first lending library in the United States can't meet its benchmark, is about as embarrassing as you get. And then the loss in OPEB, obviously, we already talked about. Couple of points to look forward to in the future. Just want to remind everybody, as we look one year down, to kind of set the context a little for discussion tonight. Got a lot of emails. I don't disagree with any of the emails and comments about the cuts to the schools over the history. I've been here 10 years. We've been working on this a lot for many years. Obviously, there's a lot of issues to dig out of that. But I think a lot of people have also forgotten that last year, the town cut about 1.2, 1.3 million in municipal cuts that were transferred to the school department to help get them to a five-and-a-half million dollar increase last year. So if you add up the proposed cuts here tonight, plus these, I just put three plus-minus million, you're looking at probably three to 3.3 million to 3.3 million in cuts to the municipal departments, okay? May not seem like a lot, but when you're only about 15%, 20% of the budget, those cuts are enormously huge and does not allow our staff to have any wiggle room. So just as context, about 21 of our departments is 8.7 million in the budget. That's all the smaller folks, procurement, conservation, planning, Board of Health, finance, et cetera. The big four, facilities, DPW, police and fire, are just under 30 million. So it gives you context, $3 million or 3.5 million off of the municipal staff is incredibly impactful. And I just wanted to make sure all of you and everybody at home listening are aware, you know, these cuts to the town, the cuts, like at some point, and I'm just going to tell you right now, in FY '27, you're really going to be digging into no other municipal employees, or very few, that are going to make up any deficits in the future. Even if you laid off a couple more people, it's really not going to make a huge dent. But you lay off a couple more DPW guys, snow and ice removal is going to get worse. You lay off a couple more custodians, the school buildings, the snow removal is going to get worse. And when you're talking about those smaller departments, those 21 departments that add up to about 8.7 million, you know, if you, just for example, Conservation Commission, Planning has one job left, one planner, one procurement officer, one conservation agent, you know, one food inspector for all of our establishments in town, we're in big trouble with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. This is no joke. One person in elections, one person in the town clerk's office, you're now down that road of not being able to properly administer your town elections. It's just a very serious thing I have to point out. Just really has to be emphasized to everybody. We are in a very, very dangerous situation relative to some of those smaller departments, and if you don't go there, you have to move to where the larger costs are, and that's police, fire, and schools. That's police, fire, and schools. That's just what it is because they are the largest cost drivers in the community. If there's no more room to cut, please look at the department head's letter. I think looking down, I think it must be a priority. We haven't made any policy decisions. This is something for later in the summer, after we get through this, but we may be looking at a policy to refrain from any new staff positions, any new initiatives, programs, and priorities for the community. As I said, we're down to the bone. We're not going to have any room in FY '27, and we will know more by the end of August or July of what the federal government is going to cut and what that impact is going to be on the state of Massachusetts. Healthcare is the biggest concern overall. The GIC and Mass Health just went bankrupt a month ago, and the state of Vermont, if you didn't look, literally, their healthcare system is literally bankrupt. So healthcare at some point in New England has got to change. Expect the legislature to do something, but that may be a year or two out. I do think that the town and schools must consider refraining from restoring old programs that affect the operating budget. We've heard a lot about this. I think all of us want to restore a lot of the things that have been lost. We are certainly empathetic and supportive of that. We've heard a lot of great feedback during the listening sessions, but we have to consider, maybe we just can't do anything new after the voters have spoken twice in the last couple of years on how they view that. I think also, we are going to have to consider by the fall whether or not we adopt a free cash policy that changes our free cash policy, where maybe a percentage of free cash every year has to be used in the operating budget to be able to sustain the budget in perpetuity. That's not necessarily one-time revenues as much as saying, out of three or four million in free cash, you use 1 million every year, be damned the consequence. I think up here on the slide, we're saying also, capital budgets will be significantly lessened if that occurs. However, given how the situation that we're in, it's something that we're going to have to consider based on the discussion this year and what we see with the feds and the state do by the end of this year. And we also may want to prepare to set aside a larger amount for free cash to the budget stabilization fund. I am very much aware, and I'm very sensitive and very empathetic to the fact that these are very hard times right now, and nothing on the slide before is good for anybody in this room, or anybody watching at home, or anybody in the community. But I can assure you this, if you think it's going to get easier in '27, '28, '29, or '30, you are sorely mistaken. There is no projection out there that I can see from either mass benchmarks, the UMass-Donahue Institute, the Mass Taxpayers Foundation, or any of the nonpartisan bipartisan think tanks that are out there, that are sending signals that somehow that the state budget situation is going to be much better in two or three or four fiscal years. It seems rainy now, but rockier times are unquestionably ahead. As I've mentioned, federal austerity, rocky economic forecast, unemployment is up a point and a half in the last eight months. You know, these are factors that are going to end up playing into the overall economic health, and these are factors that are going to play into people's ability to pay fees. This is also going to play into the fact of consumer spending. The most shocking thing to me right now with the state budget, well, the good news is, the millionaire's tax seems to be working out really well. They seem to be way over collection, which is good news for the state. The state also has large rainy day reserves. However, sales tax revenue is below benchmark from last year. So what does that tell you? That tells you that the economic forecast in households across the state, across the country probably, are holding on to their money. They're worried about their 401Ks. They're not spending as much, and that impacts the town budget on our meals, our hotel, Canvas Excise. excise, motor vehicle excise, all of the other consumer taxes, all the fees the schools collect. People's ability to pay that may not be as robust by the time we get to FY '27 or FY '[611.16][611.16]'28. So before I hand it over to, back to you, Mr. Chairman, I just want to pull up on the screen the comparables, just so we're all on the same page. If people look up on the screen, and there's a handout, this is also posted on the town website, under the FY '26 budget materials. It is also posted on the agenda for tonight. What I've done here, and what we would do, is on the left-hand side, on the option A, that was the override option, so obviously that isn't going to go forward. Option B over here shows on the right exactly the revenue changes that occurred. You will notice in local receipts, a drop in the almost half a million because of the third ambulance, and in all of, really, that's the main change that's on here. We also updated the Chapter 70, this charter school, the unrestricted aid. Those reflect the Senate Ways and Means Proposal that came out, you know, a few weeks ago. So we've made those adjustments on the revenue sheet. There's really not a lot else there to go through, and I'm just going to go to what I think most people are here to see. You can look in the right-hand column, and you'll notice the numbers that I just went through on the chart are clearly labeled right here in the adjustment column. And you can clearly see, as you scroll down the entire document, where those reductions are, what the budget proposal was originally approved by the Finance Committee, and then the option A, which was the override amount, and then option B is the proposal that's before you tonight with the reductions in the budget that were presented to the community as part of the joint budget subcommittee process. So people can take a look at that in their seats, or go online, get on their phones, and take a look at it. I'm not going to go through it all again, but that is where the cuts are, and you'll see the adjustments throughout the entire budget. Happy to entertain any questions after the hearing, I believe, Mr. Chairman, or if anybody has anything now. I know the chiefs and some of the other folks are going to come up.
Okay. I'm going to let the chief speak. I'm going to let the two people that asked to speak. Chief Lynch. PJ.
Okay, Mr. Chairman? All right, so I'm just going to go over exactly what we're basically looking to do. We're losing $218,000, and what does that equate to impacts to the department? So just a little history, just to make sure, so that when I explain it, people will understand. Time and time again, I've sat up here before and talked about the fact that we were budgeted for 54 police officers back in 2000. We only got to 50. Economic times were similar to what Jamie just explained then, as they are now, and we could see the forest through the trees, or at least my predecessors, the chiefs at the time, and decided not to hire those additional four people. What proceeded after that, no one really knew until they override 2008, was basically we ended up going from 50 to 238 during that period. We eventually ended up coming back, and in 2016, when I became chief, we were at 46. We're now at 58, 12 more than what we started with nine years ago. And I'm just putting that information out there for context. All right, so it's been occupied the department for several years, especially during fiscal '24 budget discussions, that our understaffed complement of sworn officer personnel had caused a number of agency problems. All right, so again, in fiscal year '23, we were at 54. It took us 23 years to get back to where we were back in the year 2000. 23 years, all right? Increased overtime expenditures, ordering of personnel to work open shifts when they prefer not to work, canceled training opportunities, canceled time off, reassignment of personnel from specialty positions were all issues that negatively affected the organization. Financially, it drastically decreased morale of agency personnel. All of these problems were a result of not having adequate personnel to staff the operations division to what the industry standard is. During the fiscal year '24 budget discussions, there was a lot of, there was a lot of discussion related to schedule minimums and the need for the department to fill the schedule that included two more offices above the minimum number required throughout the day to meet the increase in the call for service volume and to provide personnel, enough personnel to ensure officer safety. The department requested four additional patrol offices to provide the necessary staffing, to create the schedule with the appropriate number of offices throughout the day at two above the minimum. The department predicted that when staffed with two or more offices above the minimum, many of the issues and negative consequences outlined previously would be drastically reduced, if not eliminated. And for six months, so in nine years, over the course of nine years, not together, a full nine months, but periodically, we have been at full staff. Nine months out of nine years, okay? One of them was a six-month period when we hired these four offices, and we're actually at 58. So what we did is, to bring the FPD in line with current public safety standards for deployment of personnel, to account for current anticipated increases in call for service volume, especially those incidents involving a mental health crisis that frequently require an extended time to resolve, the safety of the officers will be enhanced with more offices assigned to patrol. It will allow for increased traffic enforcement. By far, the largest requested, the largest request that we received from members of the public looking for enhanced traffic enforcement. It would place the department in a much better position to deal with known and unanticipated events causing personnel reductions, such as retirements, resignations, injuries. Again, when you're not at full staff, you're not at full staff, and then you still have to deal with people getting hurt, people getting sick, people leaving and just regular, you know, turnover. Don't forget, we had five turnovers this fiscal year, five. If we weren't at, if we didn't have 34 offices in the patrol division, you would have seen a massive amount of forced overtime and other things, just overtime in general. We didn't see that because we weren't at 30 like we were back in 2003. We were at 34, and we had that schedule with two over the minimum. It realizes the cultural change associated with overtime and increases morale due to the reduction of forced overtime. Also, the department, also, the department additional options not currently available pertain to the hiring of personnel that will enhance our ability toward personnel diversification. So for the first time in forever, we were actually able to hire somebody and put them through the academy. That's the first time we've been able to do it in a very long time, because we have the personnel numbers. Didn't know that we were going to lose five people during the year, but we're still able to do it. It assists in maintaining our high training standards as required by the Massachusetts Police Training Council, the Massachusetts Police Accreditation Commission, and our own training program, which by far exceed anything that anybody else in the state's doing, by having sufficient personnel to cover these offices while they're attending that training. We received the funding for the four additional offices in fiscal '24, bringing our sworn officer complement to 58. Thank you. All four additional offices were assigned to the patrol division. Once fully staffed in February of 2024, we experienced the following results: directed patrols for traffic enforcement and the number of violators stopped by officers have increased dramatically, over 200-plus something, 1,000% actually. Forced overtime shifts have decreased. Training has been positively affected with opportunities increasing and cancellations nonexistent. The threat of transfer from a specialty assignment no longer existed. The department was able to hire an additional individual to attend an MPC police academy. Again, when I talk about that specialty assignment, Jamie didn't give me the four, he only offered me two. I basically pressured him for the two others, because that would have given us the two across the minimum. If we didn't get it, the two people out of specialty position, be detectives or the community service office, were going to be moved into patrol. We were able to get the money, and again, you approved it. We have experienced a reduction in overtime expenses to cover time off benefits of operations division personnel, et cetera. So for all the, for all the reasons, we're looking at 250, originally it was 250,000, again, Jamie explained that the benefits for the officers made it less. My budget does not allow me to take anything out of expenses. It's only 380,000 out of 7.5, what was 7.5. So it has to come from personnel. You know, 97% of the total budget is basically governed by the collective party, by law. We basically have to pay what we have to pay. So to basically take that 250, to take the 250, then we're going to have to cut two personnel, and then we had some other things that just happened to work out. We have a new sergeant that's going to be replacing a longtime tenured sergeant. You know, one has a master's, the other one has an associate's, and that's where you get the difference that brings us up to the 218. All right? So for all of the reasons previously listed, the department cannot in good conscience reduce personnel from the patrol operations division. We simply cannot start the process of returning to our inadequate personnel numbers we had back in fiscal '23 and eliminate all of the progress that we made to reduce or eliminate the issues we were facing. Our community service unit consists of one sergeant and three patrol officers. Unlike many other towns and cities throughout the state that would like to have a similarly-staffed unit but cannot due to financial difficulties, because now I know how they feel, we have been fortunate to assign these four primaries tasked of oversight of our public schools as school resource officers. Their activities include programs working with elderly, youth, schools, and local businesses, and include a number of popular programs the department offers, such as car seat installation, the annual leadership camp down at Meadowlock Field, internships, Dean College, Tri-County, Franklin High School, traffic enforcement, the Comfort Dock Program, et cetera. It is our belief that their presence has been nothing short of a positive experience for students, faculty, the police department, and the town. If the department was forced to eliminate two positions, which we are, the community service unit would be reduced from, from four personnel to two. The community service unit would be drastically affected by having half their number transferred to the patrol operations division to fill the open positions due to the laying off of two patrol officers. Fortunately, we don't have to lay off. Still doesn't make it any better, we happen to have two open positions. Fortunately, Sergeant Nick Paul Mary was selected as the chief of police in the town of Upton. I did not fill his position just in case something like this happened, and one of our other patrol officers is transferring to another community, and his last day is But moving these two, from where they are currently, back into patrol is the same thing as being demoted.
Yes.
They don't have rank, but they are going to, it's not, it's not a good thing. They're being moved back into the patrol operations division. The following programs would be significantly reduced or eliminated. School resource officers, obviously going to be reduced from a current four to two. The Comfort Dock Program will change drastically. Internship programs at Dean will no longer exist. The car seat installation program at Dean, Tri-County, and Franklin High School will not exist. They cannot be expected to do that. Car seat installation program, we were smart enough to send a couple of patrol officers, so we will still do it, but we just won't be able to do it to the level that we were able to. The annual summer leadership program, we have a major conversation on whether we're going to do it. We've been doing that for over 20 years. That's a hard thing to basically not, to give up. The annual Halloween party, the Fade to Blue program, the liaison program in the senior center, food pantry, weekly food deliveries, coffee with a cop, these are all things that these people do. Health fairs, senior expo-type events, job fairs, they're the ones that will go to recruit, whether it be Dean, Pittsburgh State, Miramac, or all the other colleges that we would go to. Underage alcohol enforcement, compliance checks, touch truck events, RAD and RAD kick classes, speed enforcement, and the trailer deployment. That's what they all do. That's why one of them rides around in that pickup truck. The elimination and reductions in these programs will result from the remaining two CSOSROs having to solely concentrate on performing SRO functions at the schools. The four elementaries, the middle, Franklin High School, Tri-County High School, and the charter school, because we do them all. This does not mean the department would not respond to the schools we needed. We would still respond as always, but patrol operations personnel would now have to respond to a number of calls to the schools that would have been handled by a specially-trained school resource officer. You can't, you simply can't expect two SROs to do the work of four. What you lose is having a dedicated, highly-trained SRO regularly available to respond to the schools. An SRO known by the school administration, the teachers, the faculty, and the students, and who is intertwined into that school's community. Now, with all that being stated, I just explained how the budget cuts will hurt the department, diminish the services to the community, and set the FPD back after we have worked so hard to get where we are today. The voters of Franklin have spoken and once again denied an override request to fund town departments in the schools at level service, not to provide funds for new programs or increased staffing, but to provide funding to keep the same level of service that they have joined, enjoyed for the past 12 months since July 1st of '24. Since 1991, there have been six override requests with only one passing in 2008. There are a multitude of reasons why someone may have voted no. General tax philosophy, they simply don't agree with or abhor any taxes. Personal financial situation, maybe they just can't afford it. Fiscal mismanagement of the town, distrust in government, don't believe the increase is needed, et cetera. The fiscal management suggestion is a bit puzzling. The town of Franklin, after a thorough review by bond rating agencies, provided the town with the highest bond rating of AAA. It's like having an 850 personal credit score. They don't give AAA bond ratings to fiscally-mismanaged local governments. And by the way, the federal government just lost its AAA bond rating. After living in this community since 1992 and being a town employee since 1996, it is my belief, my opinion, that a large segment of the no vote came from voters who simply don't believe the town needed the additional 3.8 million. And why is that? Because on several occasions in the past, we have five of them, when it override failed, the proposed list of budget cuts and the resulting loss of services and/or personnel wasn't followed through with as published. The town administration and the town council still made the difficult decisions to balance the budget, as they always have. They just didn't follow through with the proposed and published reductions. Because of this, the common theme among many, who I assume vote no, is that the town always seems to find the money after a failed override. Put another way, the town has a history of crying wolf. The reality is, the town didn't have, didn't find, or have additional funds in the past. It still made difficult and unpopular decisions to balance the budget. The decisions were made, were just different from those that were proposed prior to the vote, because of alternatives. One alternative or option, our option is transferring funds out of a rainy day as stabilization account into the operating budget, an exercise that was utilized last year after the failed override to the tune of 1 million. I give credit to the town council for coming through and their promise to return the funds to the stabilization account, as they did. But injecting one-time funds, as Jamie just mentioned, into a recurring annual budget, robbing Peter to pay Paul, is not a wise practice and shouldn't be done again. You can kiss our AAA bond rating goodbye if we keep doing it. The alternatives, other alternatives, the alternatives are enacted by the council to lessen the negative consequences of the originally-proposed budget cuts. In some instances, these alternatives are responses to the public's request to reduce or eliminate the published reductions to what they hold dear are essential. In the end, if the reductions to the budget, the reductions to personnel, or anything different than those proposed prior to the override as the consequences of a failed override, then to many in the community, the town is crying wolf. We're here tonight to decide what budget cuts we're going to make to meet the 3.8 million level service deficit. The town council can elect, and I assume we'll call on a number of department heads and the superintendent of schools, to outline the impact of the proposed cuts to their agencies. All department heads are expected, are expected, will argue for their fiscal year '26 submitted budgets and explain how devastating the cuts will be to their respective agencies. Members of the public will similarly make arguments in favor of restoring cuts as they were originally proposed as a consequence of the failed override for one department or another. All I see this exercise doing is dividing the community more than it already is. The department heads of this town, to include the superintendent, are a strong team who support one another, both at good times and bad. We work together regularly and are acutely aware of what each department provides to the community. Each department, in innumerable way, in innumerable ways, complements one another in our collective efforts to provide the community with the best services they desire or deserve. In other words, a reduction to one department, in one way or another, will have a negative impact on another department. I'm not going to upset this amazing, this amazing dynamic that exists between us, this dynamic that is not common in most other municipalities, and make an argument that the police department deserves to have its funding restored to the detriment of another municipal department or the Franklin Public Schools. I could make the argument for the PD not to suffer any reductions, it may even prevail, as public safety is one of those services that is high on the list for many in the community. But where's the 200,000-plus reduction previously proposed for the police department going to come from? Are we going to decimate the senior center? Are we going to lose certification again for the first public library in the nation? Increase the reductions proposed to the DPW, facilities, the schools, et cetera? I don't make the following suggestions lightly, and some may disagree with me, but I'm imploring the town council make no changes to the TA's recommended budget reductions that were published prior to the override vote. Reduce the police department budget by the recommended amount. Stick to the reductions as proposed. I'm asking for this because I'm envisioning the long term rather than the short term. If the town council chooses an alternative course of action related to budget cuts than those already proposed, we will never disprove the crying wolf theme that exists in this community. As painful as the cuts will be, don't utilize any alternative As painful as the cuts will be, don't utilize any alternatives to lessen the pain. I cannot think of another way to prove to those who believe the town is crying wolf what the reality is. For those who think the cuts that are proposed are significant, they are nothing compared to what may possibly occur in the next few years, as Jamie already explained. I don't have a crystal ball, but if we don't have enough funding currently being provided from the three funding sources the town uses to create its operating budget, property taxes, state aid, fees, now to sustain a level service budget, it should be expected that we will experience a deficit in fiscal twenty-seven, followed by an even larger deficit in fiscal twenty-eight and so on. There is a high probability that the state may be forced to reduce local aid to cities and towns in the future due to their own fiscal issues. If this all comes to fruition, and it likely will, we can expect devastating cuts in future years. I do not want to see the police department and other departments repeat the devastating losses we sustained throughout the early two thousands as I outlined earlier. The pain needs to be felt, the cuts need to be made as proposed to hopefully provide to some the credibility in town government that some currently lack. Then maybe sometime in the future, we may prove to a majority an override is warranted and drastically needed to maintain the quality of life and excellent services we currently enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, uh, next one that asked me to speak would be Chief McLaughlin.
Please. Come forward.
Always a pleasure to see you, Chief.
Chief Lynch is always a tough actor to follow. I'm gonna start a little different, I'm, uh, I'm gonna, first and foremost, I wanna begin by directing my comments to all nine councilman people. Um, as you know, I've been here for shy of six years, and you've all provided incredible, overwhelming support for the fire department. When it came to budget time, capital time, we've got manpower in the last five years, equipment. We've gotten overwhelming support from you folks, almost a hundred percent unanimous within almost six years, which is amazing. I bring this up because I never want any of you to think we'll be forgotten, lost, or less appreciated because of what happens here tonight. You all have a very difficult decision to make based on the vote last night. The failed override plan B has been transparent for several months. For us, two hundred, over two hundred thousand dollars, which is equivalent to two firefighters. We respect it and will honor that plan. We acknowledge we have to take our sacrifice too. Like all the other departments around the town, I completely agree with the testimony of Chief Lynch, I don't wanna kinda say the same thing in the interest of time, but I just wanna go on record, what he said earlier, I completely, wholeheartedly agree with. So, tonight, I need to clearly define the consequences we face. We originally budgeted the FY twenty-six budget for sixty-one firefighters. Uh, we do currently have one vacancy, and our last firefighter was hired on April seventh, two thousand twenty-five, so that firefighter will have to be let go. Eighty-three, which is our third ambulance, will be permanently out of service at oh seven hundred hours on July first, two thousand twenty-five, as a result of the two loss of positions. We appreciated the opportunity in February for us to come in front of this council, and we provided the data of the success we had with that part-time ambulance. We think we successfully proved to not just you, but to the whole community, that we need not just a part-time ambulance, but we need a full-time ambulance right now. And we think we successfully provided that data. As a reminder, in calendar year twenty-four, with that third ambulance in service, we, if we did not have that ambulance in service in calendar year twenty-four, we would have had four hundred and sixty-three mutual aid calls. So I do safely project tonight that in FY twenty-six, we will have around five hundred mutual aid ambulance calls into town. Each call, each call nets, not the billing, each call nets into the general fund about one thousand dollars. So I bring that up tonight because this is the part that I can't wrap around my head. We will forfeit approximately five hundred thousand dollars in ambulance transport revenue to save two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in FY twenty-six. I'm actually gonna repeat that, and I'm gonna say it a little slower. We will forfeit approximately five hundred thousand dollars in ambulance transport revenue to save two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in FY twenty-six. I am a firefighter, I'm not a financial expert or wizard, like some of the folks that come up to you folks at certain meetings, but I can tell you I have common sense. I have common sense, and I will tell you that this makes no sense whatsoever. But Mr. Chairman, as I have said many, many times during this budget season, the money is secondary. There'll be five hundred calls with a delayed responses. When I say delayed responses, I'm talking about the time from an ambulance arriving at the scene to taking you to hospital, I want to be very clear. Initial treatment will still be happening as is. There'll be a Franklin fire truck, a Franklin battalion chief, a Franklin staff car, there may even be an off-duty Franklin firefighter in their own personal car that shows up to initiate care. However, there will be five hundred cases where there'll be a delay, and I'm, I will say of those five hundred calls, maybe the majority of them, five, ten, or fifteen-minute delay might not be a significant thing. But I assure everyone here tonight, of those five hundred calls, there will be heart attacks, there will be strokes, there will be a trauma from a motor vehicle accident, there will be an early childbirth, pregnancy. I can assure you, those calls will be part of that five hundred, and I'm telling you that seconds, not minutes, make a difference when taking these patients to a hospital. Nevertheless, all that being said, I do not want to see another department suffering at the expense of the fire department retaining positions, even for such a critical service. You've never heard me, Chief, Chief Lynch, or any other department head in this town say that their department is more important than the others. I agree with sharing the burden with everyone else. The voters have voted, the plan of reductions have been mapped out for months, we accept the decision at the fire department. And finally, Mr. Chairman, the Franklin Fire Department is good and will survive. The men and women of the department are true professionals and will persevere. They will continue to respond to more calls, continue to train, maintain ISO one rating, treat old people with professionalism, professionalism and respect, volunteer at a time to secure another three million dollars in grants over the next six years. Open houses at the station, offer stop-the-bleed courses to the public, offer hands-only CPR to the public, participate, participate in Memorial Day Parade, grieve together after a bad call, volunteer at the senior center with the save program with the elderly, volunteer at the schools with the save program, take part in the senior project at Franklin High School, host the corned beef dinner, dinner at the senior center in March, build ramps for homes for people that need wheelchairs, conduct the home inspections for the elderly, touch a trucks, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Business will not change going forward. This will be a bump in the road for us, but we'll get through it. In fact, I think that history will show it will make us stronger as a department in the future. Why? Because our firefighters are professionals, ISO one professionals, who serve this community with pride regardless. There is nobody, nobody more proud of them. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Chief. Uh, Lucas. Lucas, together, uh, superintendent of schools.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening. I feel like, um, I'm at a karaoke place and two people just sang with me, and I don't know how to sing, and I didn't expect the singing to be as good as it was. So now, now I'm up to sing. Um, no, but in, in all seriousness, I prepared some remarks as well to share. So as we're all aware, um, it's been twenty-four hours practically since then. The override did not pass, and we've heard from many members of our community who are understandably concerned and about the impact of the budget and the reductions. I share this disappointment not only as a superintendent, but as a parent and a Franklin resident. And these experiences have shaped my perspective on this whole issue, and I want to share a little bit. So I deeply respect and appreciate the advocacy and concern many community members have expressed and shared. Throughout the joint budget process, after the results of the override, in various aspects and ways, as we, uh, some of them have even asked for Franklin Public Schools to reduce its share of the structural deficit. And, uh, it's currently set to two million, as it was illustrated by a town administrator by Jamie in the, in the documents, or seek additional funding, um, to lessen the school's burden from others. And while the final allocation decision lies with this town council, uh, the proposed reductions to meet that structural deficit were informed through the joint budget process. And they were representatives, the representatives of the joint budget subcommittee included, uh, representatives of the school committee, town council, and the FinCom. And these allocations were communicated through the process and understood by our departments, you heard Chief Lynch reference this, uh, we, it was understood by our departments that these would be, uh, the cuts that would, we have to sustain if it failed. And this formed the foundation of the community's understanding of what was at stake in the vote. As a superintendent, I've tried to lead with clarity, consistency, transparency, and decisiveness and timeliness regarding the final budget allocation are critical at this time for all of us to take the necessary actions and communicate updates in a respectful and timely manner. So adjustments to this allocation after the vote or delaying decisions required to finalize and balance the budget could risk undermining the process that's been underway, could hinder our ability to make the necessary adjustments. You may recall last year, we were in a similar position. And the decisions carried out through June into July into August, which had a significant impact on our school operations with schools starting up at the end of August. And it impacted our operations. So as a school department, we need to conclude this year, continue planning for next year, prioritizing the new school reorganization, and we do not have the bandwidth to delay. We have done a tremendous amount of work to make decisions that actually put a budget number for the override vote lower because of the decisions the school committee made to vote to reorganize and consolidate our schools. That said, these are challenging times, and I recognize that we all have a tremendous responsibility to move our community forward. I think both of our chiefs illustrated this very well in their remarks, and I believe that we can do this. As it was stated, I believe it's important to follow through on our commitment to this process and the parameters that were established prior to the override vote. So, and I want to say to the school community, please do not mistake my resolve to follow through on what we have committed as a lack of advocacy for schools. Since I began this role, I've been a strong and vocal advocate for our schools, communicating transparently, making decisions, difficult ones, that I believe serve the best interests of the students and the greater good of our school community. And I have, uh, I know that we all have the responsibility, and I have the confidence that we can successfully navigate this process due to the extraordinary commitment, talent, and dedication of our FPS staff, who are also professionals. Uh, these are not easy circumstances, these are difficult decisions that have to be made. Um, and I wanted to just acknowledge, I'd be remiss if I didn't talk about, a little bit about the impacts. We've reduced, as part of the, the reorganization, we reduced twenty-nine positions, which led to the budget, that led to the vote, that was three point eight, that's how we covered the three million that was covered. Uh, in addition, last year's failed override, which basically our budget was finalized in August, we ended up cutting twenty-four teachers. Um, we wanted to move forward with a, we all wanted a yes, I, I mean, I can't say we all, I did. Um, and that, that didn't happen, but what we need to do is be able to move forward in a way that doesn't divide our community further, and also to Chief Lynch's point, creates credibility, and this is real, this is where we are, and we need the ability to be able to move forward in a productive way. So just to illustrate a few things, I will be detailing the cuts, and I know Chairman Mercer, you typically mention, the bottom line allocation is voted by the town council, the, the details are voted by the school committee. Due to the timing of the override last night and me here tonight, I have not had the opportunity to present any recommendations on specifics to the school committee, but I did want to come and prepare, I did email them some information that just prepares to provide some outline because I felt the community was really tuned in tonight. So I hope that makes sense, but I'm also trying to balance and respect, I report to the school committee and I owe it to them to, to go through the details detail.
Understood.
Okay, we're good, okay. So, um, with these reductions, uh, we are looking at, uh, approximately across various roles and positions within the district, approximately twelve reductions. These would be from the administrative lens, administrative support in some of our teaching positions, administration, instructional support, and technology. Now with that said, some of these reductions will come from unfilled positions that we did not hire, similar to Chief Lynch mentioning, um, anticipating what, what could happen. Some of them will come from actual reductions and other, others through savings from attrition, which typically attrition is when you replace someone with a salary with maybe a newer employee or a retiree that, uh, made their retirement own after we finalized the budget. Second would be in the program and operational cuts, so eliminating textbook funding, our operating budget, uh, with the, um, eliminated some of the curriculum materials and resources, reductions to our non-instructional stipends, this might not mean everything, this might not be as clear to everyone, but district committee work, we've looked at our substitute pool, um, which is critical to our operation, we are looking to reduce that as well, and then looking at, uh, in the, in the fees level area, continuing with the athletic fees that we established last year to supplement the budget. Um, the reduction of clubs and activities at the middle level and high school level, which will be determined in the fall, what will run and what won't, and, uh, an increased reliance on some of our revolving funds and, and grant funds. We have some grant money that we were able to use this year to, um, transfer some of the, um, some of the funds that we needed to, to, to meet the two million dollar number. So I say this all, none of us take this lightly, um, I will get into more detail at the next school committee meeting on Tuesday, but ultimately just to provide a broad overview. Um, those positions are from a variety of roles, those are not teachers strictly, so I want to just be clear, because sometimes one number, some, you can take that away and mentally file that away, but we actually looked across the board, I think about, um, Commandant of the Marine Corps, former Commandant, was General Madison. He talked about when he would build budgets or reduce budgets, he tried to look at the pie, and he tried to look at all the slivers of it, and then his, his approach many times was to try to draw it in from multiple areas as opposed to hitting one area and just eliminating it. Sometimes that's logical, in this case, we tried to look across the board and sustain this and not have, uh, continued detrimental impact on our students, um, for folks that are directly servicing. So we have worked with our team, we will communicate in further detail as we move forward, but I just wanted to reiterate that I, I support the, the overall messages that I heard from the chiefs as well.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Felicia, did you, did you want to speak? And then I'm gonna go to the public.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, honor. I just wanted to support, uh, the superintendent, the fire chief, the police chief, and as I said last week, was it last week you were meeting?
Two weeks.
Two weeks ago. Yeah. As I said two weeks ago, as you guys can see, it's part of the same story, because I can tell you the same story for the library, that when I took over, the staff Because I can tell you the same story for the library, that when I took over, the staff was at 25 people. Today is less than half that number. The budget in 2008 was only 200,000 more than what we are talking about today. And as the police chief already said, I do not understand, I respect the decision from the community, but I do not understand how more we could put it. If you do not see a library operating at 2008 budget levels, if you do not see that as efficiency and cost effectiveness, if you do not see a library that came from 25 to 12 people and when compared to com- to comparable communities is 12 people compared to 39 in Natick, to 28 in Needham, to 24 in Norwood, our neighbors, to 20 in Milford, if you don't see that for the cost efficiency and effectiveness, I don't know how else we could put it. Look at the programming, look at the hours, look at our presence in the community and the impact that we make. Beyond that, this is not lost on other towns. Recently, the library got an invitation, the Massachusetts Library Association reached out to us. They have been observing the creative solutions, they have been observing the programming, and they have been observing the quality services that we are providing to the community. They reached out to us and invited us, three members of the staff, to make presentations at the Massachusetts Library Association. I am very proud of the staff, I am very proud of the work that we do, but unfortunately, unlike the fire chief, we have been operating on very slim margins. I wish I could assure the community that we would continue at these levels. Unfortunately, we can't. So, this is what the community can expect going forward. Sunday hours will be closed and all of the painting workshops and chess programs that we provided on Sundays will be canceled. The community can expect longer wait times for popular materials in all formats. Now, the wait times is between one or two months. I couldn't even tell you if it will be six months because we've already seen the impact from the federal cuts. The Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners has already reached out to us with a long list of electronic content that they can no longer provide. Minimum library put us on notice to budget, to increase our collection budgets for 2026 because they have no choice but to cut due to federal funding. And that's just the first step. Now, how does it impact programming? Everything impacts the order. So, the community can expect to see over two dozen programs less a month, beginning July 1. It is very sad because we've worked since 2012 so hard to build to a level where other communities recognize us, where other communities say, hey, come share your creative solutions so that we can learn from you. And now begins the slow erosion of the library services. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, this is a public hearing, uh, but I felt it was important that everybody heard from, uh, the main department heads before I went to the public. So, I apologize to go to them first, but I think it was important for everybody to hear from them before we started, uh, these comments from the, uh, public. So, at this point, I will open it up to, uh, any comments from, uh, anyone in council chambers. Three minutes, yeah, three minutes.
Trust me, it won't be three minutes. Good evening.
Just name the address.
River at a Baptist Tray here in One Green Street in Franklin. I am a lifelong resident of this town. I love it with my whole heart and soul, I'm sure all of you know that. Obviously devastated at the loss of our override. Further devastated by tonight's presentation. However, Mr. Helen Superintendent Giger, Joint Budget Subcommittee, the FINCOM, department heads, and town council members have made it clear what would be cut if this override failed. To those town councilors who openly and actively supported the process by the learning sessions, canvassing, holding signs, and hosting signs in your yards, I would like to personally thank you. As difficult as this is, you must make the cuts that you outlined swiftly and without guilt. And if any of you fail in this endeavor, you are not doing your job and what is best for this community. As always, thank you. You are incredibly talented and volunteer your time and services, and this is in a very difficult position for you to be in. I appreciate all of you, but not to quote Coach Belichick, do your job. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else in council chambers? Just name an address, please.
Nadia Mazoff, 35 Reed Street. I'm not sure I even need to read this, but I'm going to anyway.
That's okay.
Like most of you, I've spent months of my time trying to learn and educate this community about our budget situation. I'm disgusted, upset, and genuinely disturbed that this community is not a we community at all, but one that only looks out for their own. Except for tonight. Tonight, I'm here to ask you to hold both yourselves and this community accountable for their own actions. Tonight, you face impossible decisions of having to select which cuts to implement across departments. I emphatically and empathetically ask you to honor the proposed cuts as outlined. The school department and administration have worked tirelessly to save this town $3.1 million with the restructuring plan on top of bearing the brunt of over a decade-long list of impactful cuts. Every family and child in the public school system will undergo a transition next year and now in an underfunded and starved school system. This town should be grateful for what the schools have endured and for the present-day parents and children have taken upon their shoulders in ways of fees, lack of adequate support, and lack of programming. Instead, many of the voters couldn't even be, couldn't even be bothered to show up, or those that did selfishly chose to be short-sighted. This community needs to understand that they will be held accountable for their intolerance or abandonment by feeling the impact of their vote or lack thereof. The schools have done their job and parents have ponied up the cash to ride and play. Parents have also endured the emotional juggles of the town inadequacies. Personally, I have now been part of two school closures. The first didn't save this town a dime, yet I'm thankful that it got me to start listening to the conversations, the same conversations that have not changed for the last 15 years. Tonight, you need to show this town that proposed municipal cuts were not scare tactics. You need to demonstrate that these nine months of budget-related conversations and explanations were not just smoke and mirrors, but very much the reality of our situation so that every person out there, like myself, who spent hours off work to educate, listen, correct, and advocate, can at least feel some solace in knowing that we did so to prevent this outcome. We will all suffer from these impacts unfortunately, but I don't see another way forward in this stubborn town. Let me be clear, I am not against police, fire, or any department. I'm against this town thinking this is a game. I don't envy your position, but perhaps when this community feels the pain that our students and families already feel, they will understand that they are in fact a big part of the problem. There is no way to win tonight, but please do everything in your party power to not hurt the, hurt the schools more than they already have endured. This whole town needs to feel this outcome, not just our youth. This is my message to you, councilors. My message to the town is that this is never going to work if we don't come together and start listening to each other and working together. Students and our children don't get a second chance to grow up or hit pause. As, we as a town need to grow up and accept that taxes are an adult responsibility and are needed to support all, not just the specific departments we care most about. Thank you.
Thank you, Nadia. Is there anyone?
Max.
Name an address, please.
Hi, I, my name's Max Marangello. I live at 127 Central Park Terrace. I just wanted to say that I appreciate the frank and honest testimony from Town Administrator Helen, Police Chief Lynch, Fire Chief McLaughlin, Superintendent Giger, and Library Director Odie. I urge the council to vote in the affirmative for option B without amendment. Thank you.
That's a familiar face. That's a familiar face.
Like he's hiding over there.
Denise Spencer, 59 Milliken Avenue. Uh, before I begin, I just want to be clear that what I'm about to say reflects my own beliefs. In the past, I, I have been pressured by town leadership to deliver statements that did not fully represent my views in an effort to create the appearance of agreement or unity. That is no longer the case. These words are mine and mine alone, and I hope that it does not impact negatively the school department. Our schools have been told repeatedly to be creative and to think outside of the box. So, I ask, has the town applied the same demand for creativity elsewhere? Has there been discussion about consolidating facilities, shuttering the historical museum? Has the recreation department increased their fees, perhaps reorganizing the senior center and have it run part-time out of the library? My fear is the municipal cuts will exclusively impact the schools. For example, if the police department has to cut two staff, those two just happen to be the school resource officers. That was already discussed, so that was right. Or the library has to make cuts and the impact is the middle school blast program. After speaking with people on both sides of the issue, it is obvious that many citizens recognized an override was needed. However, they did not trust that the town council and town administrator would appropriate the funds correctly. Franklin Public Schools have already done the hard work. They've closed schools, redistricted, eliminated countless courses and programs, pink slipped so many invaluable teachers and staff, raised transportation and athletic fees. At every turn, they've stretched every dollar further than it should have to go. So, now I urge you, the town's leadership, to be the ones who get creative, to think outside of the box, and to make sacrifices that reflect the shared responsibility we all have to our community's future. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else in council chambers that would, please? Name an address, please.
Ken Ojuku, 73 South Street. Um, the vote yesterday went the way that some people, you know, some of us wanted it to go, and it went the way that some of us didn't want it to go. Whatever the case is, we are where we are. I think it's important to, to recognize that. I, um, you know, I'm not going to tell you to stick to the cuts that were outlined. I believe you're going to do that. Uh, that's been reiterated, reiterated by all the department heads that we've, that we've heard from today. Uh, you know, are there potential other opportunities? Yes, but there's not a way for us to make up that 3.8 million dollar deficit without doing what we're doing. We're cutting to the vote. We are where we are, we have to live with it. Uh, the question is not where we stand today, but where do we, where do we want to go? We spend a lot of time in this town looking backwards. We've got to stop that. We're not going that way. We need to figure out a way to move forward. Uh, we talked about moving forward together. I know that's, that's an attempt that does include everyone, or as many people as we can. I think the listening sessions, you know, over, over the winter were a good way to, to get that started. I, I strongly encourage us to keep doing it. I recognize that that takes more time from, from you all and, and, and from people who are doing this on a volunteer basis out of their belief in community and their belief in service. Yet, we had, we, we do hear people who don't have those same beliefs arguing and not listening in. I think the only answer to that is to continue to provide information, to continue to provide the opportunity for people to be heard, you know, in, in those forums. My ask is, is not going to be, you know, tweak, tweak the numbers one place or another. You're going to do what, what, what feels right based on what you understand. My ask is to think about where we go from here. Those listening sessions, the, the go-forward strategy, we need to be better, we need to make a plan, uh, so that, you know, in, in 20 years, our fire, our, our police chief isn't talking about the fact that the numbers he has then are the same numbers he has now, which are the same numbers he wanted 20 years ago. We can't get there. We can't, we, there's no way for us to cut our way to success. We need to make a better plan. My ask, that's all.
Thank you. Please.
Hi again.
Name an address.
Arielle Shear, 66th Road. Um, I'd like to contribute to the conversation, like, again, about moving forward with what we have to work with by sharing both a perspective about important priorities and an actual implementable long-term cost-saving opportunity. It's a small thing, but it's doable and it's worth adding to the conversation. Tonight, we're at a crossroads, and it's one where you have to start making real decisions between what we want and what we need. For example, we might want a historical museum, but we need enough ambulances to respond to emergencies in time. We need to address costs that will grow exponentially if we let cumulative harm snowball just because we didn't stop it when we could have. Instead of continuing to fund the historical museum, an expense of roughly $75,000 a year, we could use those same funds to hire a highly-trained, certified Orton-Gillingham teacher for dyslexia at one of our elementary schools. And this isn't just about giving our kids a fair shot at reading. Dyslexia impacts, what is it, one out of five kids, 20%. Um, it's about avoiding thousands of dollars per student in later special education services, academic remediation, behavioral support, and more. Because when a child is expected to perform in a system that never gave them the tools to succeed, they don't just struggle, they break. And that's enough of a reason, but we also pay a financial cost for that breakdown, year after year, through graduation and beyond. In fact, one might say it's like making a conscious choice not to vote for a $3.86 million structural deficit because you'd rather spend the money on something else or because it's human nature to struggle with the concept of cumulative harm that you can't actually see happening unless you're looking at a long road of numbers, figures, and projections that may show exponentially higher costs over time, but kind of strip that punch-to-the-gut feeling you get when you open your tax bill and see an extra couple hundred dollars in bold-faced type. In recent weeks, I've immersed myself in the town's budget. I went through it with a fine-tooth comb. Um, I was looking for things for, like the historical museum, not because it isn't valuable to someone, but because it is ultimately a want, not a need. In my own time, I have pulled out the expenses I believe could be eliminated with minimal cumulative harm and reallocated to programs that do have research-backed positive and exponential downstream impact, like early identification for dyslexia, which, this research paper that I'll share with you later, um, shows that there is somewhere between an 800 to 2,000% return on an investment, uh, through early identification and faculty training. This is for the state of California done by the Boston Consultant Group. Uh, or things even more straightforward, like the resources to get to the scene of an accident on time. I'd like to share everything, my newly gained municipal mastery combined with my previous expertise, positions me to speak knowledgeily about. I've highlighted all of those things in yellow. Um, what I really learned from this process is, I don't want your job, any of you. If you're adding two and three and getting elephant, you should check your math. And when you put a law into place that's based on a 1% to 3% stable inflation rate that never materializes, and then you can't deal with that because you are having costs that increase at every double and triple that, and you're adding things to your shopping list along the way because the law tells you have to, adding two and three and getting elephant might just be slightly more plausible than what you folks are trying to do. And I appreciate the work, expertise, and effort you've put into trying to do so anyhow, and I won't take any more of your time.
Thank you. Thank you.
Jenna Cohen, 14 Elm. Thank you. As some people know, I'm a little bit of a crier, so bear with me. In this moment, I have both gratitude and extreme disappointment in my town. And we're here. And I'm confident, extremely confident, that we can move through it together and land in an even better place. It will take kindness, patience, respect, community connection, and passion, and an expression of care for what we love and value.
Jenna Cohen, 14 Elm. Thank you. As some people know, I'm a little bit of a crier, so bear with me. In this moment, I have both gratitude and extreme disappointment in my town. And we're here. And I'm confident, extremely confident, that we can move through it together and land in an even better place. It will take kindness, patience, respect, community connection, and passion, and an expression of care for what we love and value. As we have heard tonight, teams across this town have worked diligently. This council, and the Joint Budget Committee, and the town administrator and his staff, and all of the departments have worked diligently to educate, to communicate, to crunch numbers, and do right by us. They have built apartments over a relatively short period of time that we can all be proud With this override, we have together undone some, but not all, of that hard work. We have impacted the morale of our helpers. As they wonder about their job stability, overwork themselves because they care so deeply, and move on to help in other communities because they're not confident in their place and value here. We, in Franklin, can do better. As Jamie and others have laid out, the pain needs to be felt across every single department. It's what's been laid out, explained, available for discussion to all of us. And with that, slightly more than 20% of this town decided that this was the right path forward. 20% of this town decided on this path. If you want different, show up and vote. As department leaders have illustrated, this hurts us all a lot. And given the transparency and inclusiveness of the process, they have planned, and they are committed to togetherness, not divisiveness. Perhaps we, as citizens and neighbors, can follow their lead. I'm almost done. So I ask, as hard as it is, to keep your word. Lead, lead with integrity, even and even more so because of this hard moment. I trust you. Not everyone does. Show us that we need to, that we can, make the hard decisions. And I ask our community, please, engage with respect. Stop name-calling. Stop stealing signs. Stop shutting each other down, but listen, perhaps with an open mind, to someone else's story. Be willing to believe that perhaps leaders are doing their best. Have the expertise that many of us do not, and we don't want their jobs either, and that they want what's best for this town. We may have different perspectives of exactly what that looks like. That doesn't mean there's fiscal mismanagement, and we can be decent nonetheless. And if you think you can do better and care, run for a seat. Be the change through engagement. I'll be showing up, not there, but I'll... Yet. I'll be showing up, but don't sit back and complain and then do nothing. And remember, the people you yell at on social media are your neighbors, perhaps your kids, friends, parents. Be kind. Maybe meet up for coffee. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenna.
Rowan Lowell, archivist at the Franklin Historical Museum. I would like to say, first of all, that I am not here to clap back at anybody. I am not here to dismiss anybody's comments. I'm also not here, believe it or not, to defend my position or that of the historical museum. I think that there are a lot of important, important projects, important community-oriented projects that serve thousands and thousands of our community in so many ways that we cannot even begin to name, and every single one of those has value. That also applies to our administrative departments and to our schools, and none of us as department heads are denying the effects that this is going to take on the schools. We are not here to say that our budget means more than any part of the school budget. And we are here in service of the town, which includes the schools. And we, going into the budget season, we knew from day one that we did not want to create this divide, to say that, you know, considering reductions, if an override does not pass, the reductions will need to come from somewhere, and we are not going to point fingers. So in the coming months, whatever may happen after tonight, I just urge folks to consider this when they are using the town services, coming to the town hall, visiting the senior center, the library, and whatever time that they are operating, and treat the folks that are serving you with compassion and understanding because they are all doing their best. None of us are working 35-hour weeks that we are contracted to. We are all putting in our extra time, whether it be through budget hearings, meetings, late-night work, all sorts of things throughout the entire year, not just during the budget hearing process. Just urge folks to think about the person that you're talking to. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in council chambers that has a question on the budget or a statement?
I think I'm all right, besides the fact that I'm a Knicks fan, it'll be okay. I think that'll be all right. Oh, Jamil Adams, I'm on Jefferson Road. And so, I kind of drove over, so I don't know what I missed in the last five minutes coming over here, but I heard a lot of folks showing care for our community, for our town. I've been here for like seven years going on. And so, my thing is, politics shouldn't dictate how we move as a community, shouldn't dictate how we go forward, because we all have people in here who have lost jobs because they've been laid off. I'm in education, I know that we've laid off more than tens of thousands of people. But the thing that didn't stop people from getting laid off was what side of politics they fell on. When people's houses were getting burned down in California, your political identity didn't determine whether your house was going to get burned down or not, right? Correct. Now, when budgets get cut and they're going to stop giving food to the food pantry, we going to just let the food pantry go down? No, we're not going to do that, right? Those of us who can, we'll get some food, and we'll give it to the food pantry so everybody can eat, yes? So my ask is for us as a community is to not allow this. I don't want to wait to find out what it's like to not have enough police and for the fire department not to be able to do what they got to do, and for the library to be suffering. I don't want to wait for all of that. We don't have to wait in order for that to happen. We can be a community and show love for each other. This thing should not be the type of thing that destroys families and relationships and marriages and friendships and put people against each other. That's not what this should be about. There's all these people on this board, I know like half of them, anyway, and I know and because we disagree on something doesn't mean we shouldn't be able to move together, you know what I mean? And so, I ask us to literally dig down and figure out what we can do, what we can do. I'm one of those people that say, maybe we should sacrifice. But am I rich? No means at all am I rich. But I'm willing to sacrifice, give whatever little bit of change I can to help support we need to make happen, I can do that. That's something we can do. There's people who voted yes, we can let that be sort of, you know, the starting gate. People can say whoever voted yes, maybe we can give a little bit more kind of thing, you can figure that piece out. People who voted no, maybe it's because you can't, for whatever reason, we have to understand. And we'd be all right with that. What I'm talking about is sacrifice and understanding and compassion and empathy. These are things that we're losing. Our town, our town, and our is the most important part of that. We're in this together. No one voted because they wanted to harm somebody else. I didn't see the vote no people saying hate those people over there, and the vote yes people saying hate those people over there. We're trying to convince people on the way in. We all need convincing to care about each other. If one of us is getting hurt here, we're not going to ask which of your political identity before we help you, right? We can apply that same measure of humanity to our town. We can do that. From what I understand, I'm not going to put the politician under the bus, but from what I understand, we haven't fully explored the possibilities of how taxes could work and some of our flexibility and parameters of how we can use our tax money. So I'm asking the politicians, those that I know and don't know, let's talk about that now, before we end up back in the same place in December or next year or the year after something like that. Let's take control of this thing and be the example for other towns that may find themselves in the same situation. We just got out of a budget, Lucas is coming into some heat, and he's trying to work it out. And so, we need to make that happen. It's on us to make it happen. I know I've got like three minutes, I probably got like...
Yeah.
That's it?
Girl, hold on.
Okay. No? All right. So, anyway, I'm going to chill. I'm going to chill. I just felt the way and wanted to share that piece because we didn't hear that part. We didn't hear that part, you know?
Okay, is there anyone else in council chambers? Please.
Bob Kaufman, excuse me, Forco Hassetway, Council on Aging. I'm not here to speak about the senior center, but I am here to address those people who have voted against the override. When we first moved to New England in '83 from Chicago, we bid on a home up in Andover, and I was going to go in low until the Realtor explained Proposition 2.5. Well, unless you use modern math, it's pretty easy to determine that with a 2.5% limit, you're up against an average inflation rate of 3.3% for the last 96 years, and you're always going to be behind the eight ball. And instead of being compound interest, it's compound deficit financing. So if you never built another school, or a fire station, or even expanded staff in any department, we'd still be in a situation similar to here as we are now, 40 years later. So what do we have to do? We're going to have to let people feel the pain. Override will pass eventually, but they're going to have to feel the pain. I had, well, I call it a privilege, I'm not sure it was, I worked for a number of former GE executives who were all disciples of Jack Lynch. And one of his, other than kill the people and leave the building standing, he said, when you walk in your office in the morning, you grab the sharpest thorn and you squeeze. It's time to squeeze. As the chief said, you folks and previous, you know, council members were able to pull rabbits out of the hat, well, the rabbit's dead. So, you got to do what you got to do. And we're not going to get out of this until people feel the pain. And as I said you once before, I'm glad I don't have your job.
Is there anyone else in council chambers? Is there anyone else in Zoom land? I see I think one, two hands up.
Dan Saunders.
Dan Saunders, I think I need to stand up for a bit.
Let him in, there's a panelist.
Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, Dan.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Sorry. Dan Saunders, Curtis Lane, Franklin. Next time I see that Knicks fan out walking his dog on Jefferson when I'm taking my walk, I'm going to give him a big hug. He deserves it. So anyhow, what I'd like to say is that I think it's, I guess, right that anyone who voted no get punished, as was inferred by a lot of the people that have spoken, including the chairman Mercer. And I'm okay with that. And I'm okay that all those cuts that were outlined on Jamie's first slide are done, except there are two cuts. Well, there's one cut there that, as the chief of police said, some people believe there's some financial mismanagement. Well, I think it's financially irresponsible to take a $178,000 cut or whatever it is to the fire department and give up $500,000 in revenue. The chief, the fire chief said that, and he's absolutely right. It makes no sense and the stubbornness to just put all the cuts you advertised upfront to just do that. You can do all the rest of the cuts because there's no, nothing glaring like that one. I plugged all the numbers into Jamie's sheet, and if you just restore the cuts to all public safety, police and fire, it comes down at the bottom line to, I think it's a $87,000 or $97,000, $98,000 surplus because it restores all that income. So really, that's where I'm coming from. I really don't think you guys should be cutting police and fire. I know everybody as a team, and I can appreciate that, wants to share in the pain, but I don't think we should be putting the pain on the community when it makes absolutely no financial sense whatsoever. That is a glaring thing. The rest of the cuts, I totally, I'm a go with, but you guys, town council, not the no voters, town council decides who cuts it. The no voters were just exercising their constitutional right and going out and voting. The town council decides who the cuts are. I heard somebody say you shouldn't have to have any guilt. Well, I'm not saying you should have to have any guilt either, but I think you should have some guilt when you totally are taking a cut just for cut sake, when you can finance it with revenues coming right out of the public safety group. So that's all I'm saying. I appeal to you to restore the police and fire cuts, and all the rest are fine, as far as I'm concerned.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
Okay, KP Sempali? You out there, KP?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, KP.
KP, we can hear you.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, KP. As a member of the school committee, I want to take a moment to address the recent override vote and its outcome. While we respect the democratic process and the decision made by the voters, the failure of the override brings significant challenges for our schools. This is not just about numbers. This is about students, teachers, and the quality of education we provide. Without the additional funding, we are now facing very difficult decisions that may include staff reductions, larger class sizes, and reduce programs, et cetera. We are committed to being transparent and collaborative as we move forward. The school committee will continue to explore every option, prioritize student needs, and work closely with the town leadership to find sustainable solutions. We thank the community for your engagement and continued support of public education. Our mission remains clear: to provide the best possible learning environment for every student, even during difficult times. Thank you.
Is there anyone else out in Zoom land that has a question on the budget or a comment? I'm not seeing anyone. Okay, as the last part of the budget hearing, I'll go once again through the council for their final comments. So that with Counselor Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before I...
Before I start, I do wanna take a quick pause and thank everybody. Everyone who's here tonight, everyone who showed up to vote yesterday, and especially to the staff, you know, to the election staff that take their time out of their busy days to come down and man the polls, and to Nancy and her crew for all of the hard work that went into making yesterday possible. Regardless of the outcome, there's still a lot of hard work that goes into making this town run on any given day. And to Nancy and to the, and to the crew, I wanna thank you for all of that hard work. It means a lot to me as a counselor and as a citizen. I apologize, I get a little clipped from time to time too, so I'll do my best to keep it, to keep it together. I could use a big hug at some point. Way to run. But, um, but really, in all honesty, all joking aside, I, I, I'm just so grateful for this town and for everyone in this town and for our staff. But I have to start off my little speech. I'm not the best speechwriter by any stretch. I'm just a bad electrical teacher. And I apologize as I, I stole some lyrics from a song, but I start off with the word déjà vu. This is what I like to call Franklin's Great Schism. A schism is a division or separation caused by ideological differences or disagreement. It signifies a breach of unity and formation of separate groups. In a more general sense, a schism can refer to any division or split in a group or a society. This song, one of my favorite songs probably ever, is a song by a band named Tool, which ironically, the name of the song just happens to be called Schism. I stole a snippet from the song of the lyrics just to kinda make a point. And it goes like this. There was a time that the pieces fit, but I watched them fall away. Mildewed and smoldering, struggled by our coveting. I've done the math enough to know that the dangers of our second guessing doomed to crumble unless we grow and strengthen our communication, which is key. Ironically, it's, it's sad but true, but yesterday, fifty-one percent people showed up yesterday to vote no against this override. That means forty-nine percent of those people voted yes. Of a total of twenty-five-thousand-eight-hundred-and-sixty-three people, sixty percent of the town's registered voters did not cast a vote. But this isn't new news, ironically. Yesterday, ironically, just so happened to be repeat day, National Repeat Day. I was joking with my apprentices about that. Sadly, history tends to repeat itself here in Franklin, and I'm gonna take us into the Wayback Machine because I was sitting in Ted's seat on this day back, let me bring it up for you. This was on Wednesday, June ninth, two thousand and ten. I was a newly minted counselor, sitting on this council, and this was a letter from the sitting town chairman of the Franklin Town Council, Mr. Scott Mason, and this is a letter from him to the community stating, "As I write this, I'm trying to clear my head after a very long day at the polls yesterday. Nearly forty percent of our registered voters exercised their constitutional right to vote in a special election that asked voters to approve a three-million-dollar tax override that so eloquently failed." I'm gonna skip ahead in his letter. "We also met and heard from citizens who don't believe in what we are doing. We were told that Franklin overspends, that Franklin must live within its means, and that because private businesses are not providing raises to its workers, Franklin too must continue to cut personnel and services. And in some cases, we as the town government were blamed for these problems, and at the state and federal level. Some of these citizens engaged with us in a polite civil conversation, and some unfortunately made their feelings known in a less mature way." Boy, that sounds vaguely familiar. But that was exactly fifteen years ago this week that that override failed, back in two, back in two thousand and ten. And ironically, history tends to repeat itself because back on that override, that override failed by, get this, three-hundred-and-twenty-three votes. Yeah, let that ring in. Three-hundred-and-twenty-three votes. Yesterday was one hundred, approximately one-hundred-and-eighty-five votes difference between the two. What's sad to say, and I, and I don't like to be a doom and gloomer, is, and I thank the gentleman who got up to spoke a few minutes ago, the rabbit's dead. You know, we, it's true. We, we are, fifteen years ago when I was sitting in the seat, we were just in as many difficult as situation because we were just coming out of the recession. There was a lot of unemployment, there were some very difficult times, very similar to what there is today. But it doesn't change the fact, and this is something I, I have to state for the record for everybody within listening ears. This is a systemic problem. This is not going to go away. Why? Because when I was ten years old, I have to go back in the Wayback Machine again, Proposition Two and a Half was passed in nineteen eighty. We have been dealing with for over forty-five years a structural deficit in every single municipality, city and town within the state of Massachusetts. This is a problem that is not going to simply fix itself, and we've been dealing with it for years. Franklin happens to be particularly stubborn when it comes to voting yes for these overrides. But the irony of the story is people seem to think nothing's gonna change. That's not true. We have, we have reached the top of our kettle and things are about to spill over. And we really, what I'm gonna do tonight really strikes me to the bone. Why? Because when people voted yesterday, whether they voted yes or they voted no, however they're, however they so choose to vote, this vote doesn't affect just the people who said yes. This affects everybody. This is the town of Franklin. When we make these cuts, this is an across-the-board cut that's going to cut through everybody, not just the schools, not just the police, not just the fire department, not just those who, you know, who, who have a stake in, in the game, but everybody. So really, what we have to think about at the end of the day is, how do we want, and I think this gentleman over here put it so eloquently a little while ago, what direction do we really want this to take? Where do we wanna be another ten years from now? We really have to stop and take a close look in and out of ourselves and say, what is it that we can do to break this schism? It's, it is, it is particularly troublesome. I've been looking for a solution for years, but I'm hoping between people that are here tonight and those that support the town that we do get together and we find a solution to this. Because you know what? As it, as it was so eloquently stated in the song, I know the pieces fit, and we can put them all back together again. One of the things, Mr. Chairman, if you'll, if you'll give me just a second, Chief McLaughlin from the fire department, you made a statement earlier. Just wanna get some clarification on something. So you said that you, you are under the impression that, that your call volume is, is probably going to increase, especially since the, the chance that you're gonna lose these firefighters. But in your opinion, how has this call volume, I've, I've heard it before because you've given us presentations, but just for everyone listening, how would you express the significance of your volume of calls, just in the past, say, few months?
In the last, well, I can tell you from the presentation, in February, the last several years, it's gone up. I know last year it went up two-hundred-and-twenty-four calls in the last calendar year. I think we're right about on pace right about now, last I checked this year. But not just Franklin Fire Department, it's basically all departments, is the, the run count's going up. And like I've also testified before, of our total run call volume, approximately seventy-two percent of that is EMS calls, EMS calls. But the numbers have gone up steadily. I would say the average has been two-hundred-and-twenty, two-hundred-and-fifty in the last three years or so.
Wow. Chief, to you and your staff, to the fire, and the police department, and to all of our first responders, I just wanna make a very personal statement. I, I really love you and care for you folks. Why? Because as an electrician, the one thing I love about electricity is it doesn't talk back to me. It could kill me if it got, if it got the chance, but it doesn't really talk back to me. There isn't much gore, there isn't much that goes with it. But I'm, I'm looking through this list since three-fifty this afternoon, folks. Three-fifty this afternoon. There was a motor vehicle crash, another motor vehicle crash, another motor vehicle crash, another motor vehicle crash, and another motor vehicle crash, all since three-fifty this afternoon. And then there's a medical, a citizen's call and a heart attack call, and these could be various things. But what I'm getting at is our first responders are constant responders. You know, they're always responding to our community's needs, and they're always professional, and they're always looking out for us and looking for our needs. In particular, their response to that very sad incident over on Grove Street and Beaver Street with that, that poor family, you know, I, I couldn't do what you folks do if I had to see some of the things that you've seen and done some of the things that you've done. So God bless you for being the great folks that you are. But I want you to know at the end of the day, you have and will always have my support regardless of the outcome of tonight. Chief, we appreciate it. Thank you very much. That's all. With one exception, Mr. Chairman, the, as, hold on. I don't want anyone to be misconstrued by what I'm saying here. I will tonight vote to support these cuts. And I think to what the gentleman stated earlier, people, people need to feel the thorn, people need to feel the pain that comes with the loss of something, and this is, this is one, one of those inevitabilities that sadly enough, hopefully, will maybe raise some heads to get us above that fifty-one percent margin on the yes side of things instead of the flip side of things. Mr. Chairman, thank you for the due time, and folks, God bless you.
Thank you, Counselor Jones. Counselor Delacroix.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, um, this is gonna be a very hard night, obviously, for everybody that's here, and I've been involved with the union for forty years, over forty years, and Counselor Jones, you're probably gonna agree with me on this, the hardest thing for a union person to do is take jobs away from somebody. So this is, this is extremely, extremely hard. I know it has to be done, but this probably is the worst negotiation contract I've had in forty years, I'll be honest. But on another vote, there, there is no more yes vote and there's no more no vote. We have to come together. This is, this is very important that we come together, and Ken's right, Ken, you're right, we gotta work together to try to just get together. Nobody needs to fight anymore. There's not, no more vengeance. Nobody needs to be mad at each other. Nobody needs to, to, to hurt anybody, you know, you know what I mean? Let's all come together. Fourteen years I've been on this council, and this is the worst division in the town I've seen in fourteen years. And I think Tommy's been on with me, Glenn's been on with me, and they'll probably agree with me. So please, let's get back together. I mean, it's, it's very hard to do this, and, but it's gonna roll too. It's not just tonight, it's gonna roll. People are gonna start, they're not gonna, they're not gonna like us anymore, they're gonna, they're gonna, people in town are looking for jobs, teachers are probably out there looking for jobs now, police might be looking for jobs. They might think I'm gonna get cut next, uh, next year, you know? Firefighters might be looking to go to another place. This could roll, administrations could go, could take a go in somewhere else. And morale is down, and when morale is down, that's just not a good thing to work around. It makes a very, very bad workplace. So together, we gotta bring together, we gotta come together, we gotta work together and try to bring Franklin back to where it belongs. I really do believe that. And, you know, I do support these cuts tonight because we have to. Honest to God, there is no more money. People have been coming up to me and said, "You'll find the money." I looked under my mattress before I came here tonight, there is no money there.
I took it last night.
Did you? All right. Well, at least somebody has it, but there is no more money, and you guys will see the, see the cuts and you'll see the pain. So let's come together, let's work together, and we'll get through this. Let's, let's come together as a team and let's work together.
Thank you, Counselor Delacroix. Counselor Plagary?
Today I spent, along with many other days, going through line by line with this budget. And I spoke to Jamie on the phone even, I had a couple of questions for him, but I said, "I have to agree with the things that he has here." I have down here numerous cuts, okay, that I didn't know if we were going to have to do or not. Many of them I didn't want to, and now I'm glad I don't have to even offer these because I think these are going to work out, as much as I hate seeing certainly police and fire, DPW, library, anyone to have any cuts in their office. But I think because we're a strong community, we're gonna be able to make things go. I really do. We're all gonna work together, we're going to be able to get things going. It's going to work, it's going to work. I think that Lucas, tell me if I'm wrong, Lucas, was it twelve teachers that are gonna be let go?
Actually, I'm sorry.
I'm wrong, because he's coming up here to talk.
I tried to be clear.
Wait a minute.
He got caught on what I predicted. It's not, it's not twelve teachers exclusively, but twelve FTEs and reductions. And are we included in that, that group of departments that you said you don't wanna see anybody feel the pain? I hope so. Come on. If we're coming together, I just wanna say it. But anyway, no, that wouldn't, that would be across the board, and I'll be detailing that out on Tuesday when I present to the school committee.
To the school committee?
Yes.
Okay. But are these reductions something that you're gonna be able to live with?
I mean, no, these are not, I, I, I think, I think we spent the last nine months explaining why we needed a yes override. I would never put forth a budget of things I didn't need. I just wanna, while I have the mic, the morale, the teachers, they have, and I say teachers, educators, because there's many people that have multiple roles, leaders, everything. The changes we've made and the timeframe we've made them, I, we have professionals working on behalf of all of your children, and they are phenomenal. And they have really worked hard to, to, to put forth the best education that this town expects. Because, you know, I live here, right? And we expect the best of everything, and I was really hoping for a different outcome for tonight because this would have been a quick meeting. It's nine-thirty, I feel like, oh, we've been at it. But anyway, to just answer your question, no, those are gonna be hard cuts. I will say, we built the model. Some positions are from cutting humans, but some are from unfilled, some are from attrition. It's a mix, and I try to give that example of trying to look across the board. And we're doing our best to try to preserve, and I, I appreciate what Counselor Delacroix said and what many others have said about moving, how do we move forward to fix this in, in the right way? And I, my whole point in my speech was around eleventh hour cuts to do, I just, I don't wanna repeat what we did last year. And I think if we're really gonna be thinking long-term, long ball, long view, we have to look at the strategy and say, how did this fail? And it sounds like the majority of people felt like they'd be pulling out a rabbit out of a hat, and that's why I stand in support with my department heads and leaders with the, with the words that were said tonight. I'm probably gonna watch Chief Lynch's speech tonight, like a motivational one you get in the feed. But, um, yeah, so just to reiterate that, okay?
Okay. I just wanna say, I think that it's wonderful the way that the departments all work together, the municipal and the school. We didn't have this back a few years ago, and it made things very difficult. I think this budget session, even though with the outcome the way it was, again, I'm gonna repeat myself, we are gonna work together. We're gonna get this done, and Franklin is gonna be great and strong. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Plagary. Counselor Chandler?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. First, like what Chief Lynch said and Roberta, I'm a hundred percent on board. We promised these cuts and we're gonna make the cuts. But I just have one thought, okay? Today I read the letter from the firefighters' union, and they used that word jeopardy about the ambulance. Could the chief come up, please, the fire chief?
Get your exercise tonight, chief.
I, listen, I really Listen, I really wanted to say nothing tonight and just vote, but you've got to just tell me that this is not a way to save lives for free. Free, okay? Okay. So that $500,000, correct? That goes in, that is money we make from that ambulance, correct?
That goes into the general fund. That's about what we actually recoup as a net, not what we build, but what the net is, roughly $1,000 per call.
Okay. So to run that ambulance, you're going to need 80 hours of overtime, which is two firefighters between 9:00 and 5:00, Monday through Friday, which I'm figuring is about $240,000. So half your money, half the $500,000, okay? Now, I know nobody would ever talk about one-time funds again. I know I've got from the schools, no. But we have $3.3 million in there. If we just borrow the $240 -- hear me out, please, Jamie. Borrow the $240, okay? So between July 1st and Christmas, the money that comes in, we pay it back to the rainy day fund. So it's not even gone for that year. So next year, we don't have to come up with the money. And then the other $250,000 for the next six months pays the overtime for these firefighters. And we run the ambulance, and it costs us nothing. If I'm wrong, please tell me. Thank you.
Through the chair.
Yeah, please.
I appreciate the point that you're bringing up. My concern would be twofold. One would be, the overtime cost will be back here in May, and our overtime budget will be in the red. And people at that point in time may have amnesia and forget about this conversation and just look at our overtime being through rules. More importantly, overtime, we've talked about newer firefighters, the newer generation.
Yeah, we have.
And overtime, I've had a lot of laterals, councilmen, come to this department. They've come here because we don't order -- we order sometimes, but not quite as much. And if we get into that situation where we're ordering a lot, that could be a deterrent for morale and for recruitment for retention. I do appreciate the point you're bringing up, but that would be my twofold concern.
Okay. I didn't take that stuff into consideration. I just saw, like, we can do this for no money.
I understand.
And it sounds exciting.
Right.
But, okay. So that's why I asked you. I'm put back in my place, no rainy day funds, and I'm going to vote for what we said we're going to vote for.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Can I ask us one other quick question?
You absolutely can.
This will be shorter than Counselor Jones. This is, because I missed those other two meetings, this is for the senior center. If she could come up just for a quick second, and then I'll be done. It's a quick question. You can just stand there, Bobby.
I'm going to blow the lights when you leave.
Hi, Sarah.
Hot mic, hot mic.
As always, I appreciate you and your whole team. So we're losing an LPN for your department, $26,000. Now, this could sound a little mean, because I know guys like Mr. Kaufman, he's very welcoming and everybody wants to come there. But if we just kept the senior center to Franklin people, would that be $26,000 worth of services? Is that many people coming in?
So it's multi-pronged, but so I will say our percentage, we're about 75 percent Franklin, 25 percent out of town. But everyone who comes in brings in revenue. So it's hard to say exactly, because people who come in and pay for fitness classes or events or meals, all of that money comes in to support the programs that we do, and that's whether you're from Franklin or not.
Okay. I was just, again, reaching for anything to do to keep, but I'm put back in my place there again, so. Thank you very much, Sarah. I appreciate you and everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Chandler. Counselor, call me a ledger.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I can't even pretend to say that I'm going to sit here and be positive and sit here and try to put on a happy face and say that we're going to be okay, because I'm not okay right now, and a lot of people aren't okay right now, and it's going to take some time to heal. And everything that I'm about to say, I need to preface it on, I do appreciate every single staff person that we have, every fireman, every police officer, every teacher, every town employee. They all do an exceptional job. So when we talk about these cuts, I understand that there's people in those seats. I know that we have to make some difficult decisions tonight, and I know that we outlined a menu throughout the joint budget process. It was a menu, in my opinion. It wasn't, "This is absolutely going to happen." It was, "These are possible cuts that are going to happen." But I do respect that we put it out there for folks to need to wrap their head around. Where I struggle, where I know many struggle, is the large portion of the budget deficit that's going to hit our school department again. I don't know that there's a simple workaround for that, but I can simply say that I think it sucks. And a school department that has taken the hit over and over and over again, that redistricted, that brought us the savings, that did everything that we can, everything that we asked, and we're going to hand that to them again, on top of a couple of police officers and a couple of firemen, which to me, jeopardizing public safety is just not even something I can wrap my head around. Where I also struggle, and I'm going to be the unpopular guy on the bus, but I'm going to say it anyway, and I don't really care, is how can we justify losing teachers and police and firemen and keep the historical museum in the budget? How can we possibly look teachers and firemen and police in the eye? Nothing against the young lady that spoke, that's our archivist. I'm sure she does a great job, but it's already been said, that is a want. That is not a need. That is not something that is bringing revenue in. That is not something that is, like, critical to the budget. It's a nice thing to have. Maybe the historical museum volunteers can get together and figure out a way to document the old furniture some other way. But I struggle with line 690 and line 691 under the current budget constraints. I also quite frankly struggle with the COLAs that are in this budget for non-union, non-contract obligated employees. We can't afford them. I know that's the unpopular opinion, because everybody wants to get whatever's in here, 2.5 percent, right? Love to be able to give that to everybody, even though I've publicly said many times, I never got a COLA in my life working. I know many people who never did. But I know it's an important thing out there to try to retain people. But perhaps, perhaps, Debbie, I'm talking. Thank you.
I'm sorry, honey. You brought up a good point.
I struggle with, again, letting go of people when we're also going to say, "This group of people we're okay with giving a small raise to." I haven't, I've been trying to reconcile. I even called my mom today, right? And I'm like, "Mom, help me understand this." And she says, "Honey, you can't understand that. You can't wrap your head around that, because, you know, money is money, and, you know, people get very defensive when you start talking about money, and, you know, you're in a totally difficult spot." And she's right. She's right, because everybody deserves that COLA. But how do we justify it? How do we say to people, "You know what? Across the board, we have to make some tough decisions. We have to let go of people, but this group of people, they're okay, and they're going to still get a small little bump." If I had my way, I would say that the non-union, non-contractual obligated employees making $100,000 or more, that we table their COLA until the fall and promise them that we're going to revisit it if we have the money. I think it sends a strong message to the community that we're listening. I think it sends a strong message to everybody that these are department heads and administrators for the most part, and that we are saying, "We want to make good by that, but we just can't right now." And I struggle also with 693, and I love Cory. I fought for that position for the Arts and Culture Director like nobody else. And I'm back and forth on that one, because there's some revenue tied to her position, unlike the Historical Museum, because she's our plan for the World Cup. She's our plan for Mass 250. She's our plan for all these things to help bring money into town with hotels and restaurants and artistic events. So I struggle with cutting our nose off despite our face with that one. But I urge all of us to give some thought before we vote about 690 and 691, as much as I think that it's great to have. And I urge us to at least think about the COLAs that are being presented in the current budget model, and maybe there is a way. I'm okay with, you know, trying to say to a group of people, like, "We're not forgetting about you altogether. We just need to see how the next six months go." My final comments really come down to revenue generation, and I don't know, they don't have to be built into the budget. But we talk a lot about departments and what they bring in and what they bring to the table, right? And we talk about our park and rec department and the great job they do being self-funded. What we haven't talked about is the potential for that department to do more, which in just charging a fee to groups that use our park and rec facilities that are not, you know, like private groups? Needham does it, other towns do it, right? That revenue, if it was going to be excess free cash, goes into capital. And trust me, I don't want to, like, I don't want to say, "Hey, charge Franklin youth football and charge Franklin baseball," but they are private groups, right? Yes, they're Franklin kids, but they're private groups. I'm sure they could contribute something for the use of the fields if asked. The group that's coming to now use the cricket field will be, like, they could pay something if a contract was done with them, right, to say, "Hey, we're giving you this beautiful field to use that we just spent some money putting all the grass and all the mulch and all the whatever." Like, there's a cost to that, right? And they would pay that. With respect to the senior center and what was already alluded to, maybe we do have to shift to some sort of, "This is the fee for Franklin residents to enjoy programs and services, and this is a different fee for people that don't pay taxes here. You're welcome to come, and we love that you come, but you got, maybe you got to pay a little bit more." Because it's getting harder and harder to justify people coming from a half hour away to use our senior center and use our programs, and they're not part of the tax solution. So again, like I started off with, I'm not in a good, I'm not in a good place. I'm, I work, I personally feel like I worked my ass off for this override, and we didn't get it. And I will come to grips with that, because I love this town, and I love sitting here, and I love giving of my time and trying to do what I think is best. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Coramia Ledger. Counselor Sherrill?
Yeah. Yeah, I just want to thank everybody who volunteered, the Bon Franklin people who gave, put all of it in. I want to thank teachers, firefighters, police, who all volunteered. We fell short. I'm very upset about it, but we did the best we could. And I have a quick question about the Historical Museum. Share through you. In other towns, there's a Historical Society that runs. Is that, do they still get funded, or like through a grant, or there's nonprofit?
Mr. Chairman, so Historical Societies are different structures. They're usually 501(c)(3)'s. And I have worked in other communities that have a society. Oftentimes, there's a 501(c)(3) group that's set up in a nonprofit, and oftentimes, they may be active in some sort of way in the museum. It's certainly a model we can look into, you know, but there's going to have to be a grassroots group that kind of self-forms, goes through the IRS process to set that up, you know, and whatnot. That answers your question. If you want me to address anything else in the museum, I'm happy to do it. But I just want to answer the question properly.
Thank you.
Thank you. You all set?
All set.
Counselor Frandillo?
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, I mean, yesterday when I found out, yeah, I'd never been more angry and disheartened and disappointed in my town. And yet, you show up here, and how can you not love this town when you have leadership like we heard from today? So grateful for all you guys do and all our public servants do. We're going to be okay. We have a lot to be grateful for in this town. We're still great. I believe that. I think we'll continue to thrive, and, you know, all our departments will continue to be the envy of our neighbors. But, yeah, this hurts. I have a few thoughts just on some of the impacts, some have been talked about and some less so, and then I have some final thoughts. And, you know, I commend Counselor Coramia Ledger and Counselor Sherrill, I mean, and Counselor Chandler. It takes bravery to continue to try to voice opportunities for savings. That's not easy to do while I disagree with some of the proposals. Certainly commend it. And I continue, like, this is what we do, is we continue to try to look under every last stone, and I want to encourage that. And I think related to that, this is me going off the cusp and not adding, but we hear a lot about, there are some services in town that are really easy to point to the revenue, the direct revenue input. But this town is an ecosystem. We have a collective value that is increased by having strong libraries, having strong schools that attracts people to come to town, to go to our businesses. These are all ways that impact our total revenue that might not be as direct as, "Here's this thing that you're paying for." So it's important that we continue to have a complete and robust offering of public services. All right, a few different impacts that I wanted to particularly note. And I'll start by saying, I do support the proposed cuts mostly in deference to the leadership and the work that they did to come together on these. I'll name that I'm still scared of our continued practice of putting the largest burden on our schools, what we lose in looking year over year, just because the budget impact had 2013 to 2025, that's what I had, between 2013 and 2025, the municipal side of the budget grew 12.4 percentage points faster than the school side of the budget. That's us continuing slowly, slowly to creep into our school expenditures. And, you know, I continue to be fearful of what happens when we do that. And certainly, if anyone knew that we were not crying wolf, it's our school parents who have continued to see services and programs cut year over year that I enjoyed and that people before me had enjoyed. And it was shown when well over 100 emails came in just in the past 24 hours, 99 percent of them, school parents concerned about the impacts to their services. I wanted to name, the DPW didn't speak today. This continues to be my biggest fear. It's an easy place to cut because its impacts are felt in the long term, not the short term. But we continue to erode our public infrastructure expenditures at a scary rate while every other rate while every other department has increased over the past two years. DPW is now a five percent total cut in expenditures. That is while we have a hundred forty-eight million dollars in near-term infrastructure liabilities that are partially or entirely unfunded. We have seen a drop in our road quality just over the past ten years of, I believe, six percent and another four percent over the next few years. This will continue to compound on each other and will leave future generations with liabilities that we're avoiding today. And that's equally true with our continued avoidance of our OPEB liabilities as we're doing today. And finally, I, I just wanted to add a little bit of color to the cutting of the administrative, the assessing, and the planning department assistance. Those are scary because those are our opportunities for new growth. If we're not going to increase taxes, then we are, then we need to find that funding through smart incremental development and the continued assessing of property improvements across town. That will be severely handicapped, and you will continue to see a decline in our ability to serve customers, to engage citizens, and to communicate to the public. I'm very scared, those are not cuts that should be taken lightly. I'll fi, I'll finish on some general reflections, and I, I hope they don't come off as bitter. I, I think both at the national and now especially the local level, too many are mistaking the sowing of fear, doubt, and division for responsible citizenship, or worse, sound leadership. Responsible citizens lean in, they ask questions, they read materials or show up to meetings, they respect professionals and volunteers, they trust experts and processes, though they watch carefully. They assume good intent, they listen to neighbors, they love. Spreading and believing misinformation and negativity is easy, responsible citizenship takes effort. Please, wherever possible, make the effort. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I get to go last, I think, right?
Yeah.
It's like, oh. This is really hard, and I think we all have heavy hearts up here, and I get choked up, too. So it's okay. I like Counselor Jones' comment about the pieces and how they fit, and we can tell that they still fit together, right?
They do.
All right, I'd like to thank the town administrator and the chiefs and the superintendent and the library director tonight for their poignant, yet inspiring comments. My fellow counselors and people in the, in the audience, the, the talk about teamwork and togetherness is really my jam, like, I love that stuff, right? I'm part of a team, I wanna be, I wanna build a team wherever I go, and I feel like if we all keep saying that, then maybe we, we can succeed as a team. You know, last year, we listened to the people after the failed override, and they said they wanted more information, so we did a joint budget committee, held meetings, it felt like forever, it was a year-long thing. I know the Counselor, Counselor, the Chair, Chair Mercer said it was like ten months, but it felt, I think it took longer to put it all together. You know, we, we wanted to help educate the public on how the budget is built, how we build revenue, what's really important, the pieces of the revenue, like what Counselor Frangello said about new growth. It's really scary if we cut all the ability to promote new growth. We had our listening sessions, we listened to the people, when they asked, when we asked them, how do you want us to fix the townwide structural deficit? And overall, there was a, there was a coalition sort of of people that just said, listen, we understand, but we can't, we're afraid we can't afford it, but please, please, keep the services level, like, please do not cut anymore. And that's being prepared, as the town administration does and the school district does. We had a list of cuts that we said, if the override fails, these are what we're gonna have to do. Of course, Counselor Frangello mentioned the DPW, they didn't get a chance to stand up. I, I feel like DPW, the schools and the facilities are always, there's a lot of money, it's easy to cut, right? You know, we talk about patrol officers and school officers and, and firefighters, and it's just, it's just horrible. To me, it's like, it's like really devastating across the whole community. But I am a believer in democracy, and like, this is my, this is my bag I carry around, just vote, 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 right? And the no votes, like, they just, the people that won, said, no, no override, we want yes to the cuts, they won. Like, so we must listen to that majority because we live in a democracy, and we have to make the cuts across all the departments, across the whole community that we said we were gonna do. And it, these cuts are not taken lightly, and this is a very difficult task. We must make the cuts that we said we would for a different future, right, for a brighter day. Sing that song, maybe Jamal will sing that song for me. Um, you know, I, I, I work in Holliston, and I actually work with the former town planner for Franklin. She worked in Franklin in nineteen ninety-six, nineteen ninety-seven. She says there were more staff in the planning department then, than there are now, before the cuts. We're a way bigger community, and it is very scary. Counselor Frangello is right. So we are listening, we, we are very serious, and, you know, like, we, we, we listen to people, we feel, sometimes I feel like people aren't listening to us. And I'll say it again, this is really difficult, but we'll get through it together. We will continue to take care of each other the best we can, we will continue to try to love better. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Hamblin. I made a lot of my statement early on. So I'm gonna just keep my final remarks very short. I, first of all, wanna thank my fellow counselors. This is not an easy task. This is really devastating, and I can tell you that every one of them sitting here have thought long and hard about these cuts that have to be made. We have a choice, they do have to be made, but we're gonna be okay. I believe in our town, I believe in our community, and everybody that's in this room is here because they love Franklin. And that's not gonna change. We need to do, we need to work harder to inform that sixty percent of the voters, eligible voters in town to, we need to help get the information to them so that they will come out and vote. I do believe, and I felt very strongly about the Joint Budget Subcommittee from day one. We all put a lot of time and effort into working that through from last September. It's been a long journey, but I think it's been a worthwhile journey. I think we've reached more citizens, there are more people that went to those polls informed to make, in their opinion, what was an informed decision. We need to get to the other sixty percent, which means we need to do more of that. And I will tell you, I will promise you, we will start that Joint Budget Subcommittee process again, starting this fall, and we will do this, go through the same process because I think it was a good process. It's gotten us here tonight, and when you look at the unity that is here this evening with all our department heads, municipal department heads, school department heads, every school committee, town council, finance committee, we all work together, and if we continue to work together, we will persevere. I, I know that in, I know that in my heart, and I know everyone sitting on this council feels exactly the same way. So with that, I'm gonna close the public hearing on the FY twenty-six budget. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, one and all, for being here, for sure. Next items on the agenda, we don't have any license transactions, we have no presentations or discussions, we need to go, the next item is legislation for action. And the first item is the budget. Now, I will explain, we've split the budget because Counselor Delaco will be recusing himself from the first vote, as he has a family member that works at the Senior Center. So he has to recuse himself, we've separated those line items from the, from the total budget, so we will move that legislation first, and Counselor Delaco will come back in to vote the balance of the budget. So with that, the clerk, the first legislation for action is the adoption of the FY twenty-six budget and amendment, and the clerk will read the amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, this is Resolution twenty-five dash thirty-seven, amendment to fiscal year twenty twenty-six budget, whereas the town council adopted the fiscal year twenty twenty-six budget on June fourth, twenty twenty-five, now therefore be it moved and voted to amend said FY twenty twenty-six budget from one hundred and sixty-three million, four hundred and sixty-one thousand and sixty-eight dollars, that's what it says, one hundred and sixty-three million, four hundred and sixty-one thousand and sixty-eight thousand.
So it's in.
Huh? Yeah, it's this one. That is this one.
Yeah.
Yep.
That presumes that you.
So you're doing the amendment, so the first number, sorry, 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 sorry.
Yep. I haven't finished reading it either. So, yes.
You're amending it before you've got a budget in place to amend.
So, that's logical.
Thirty-six is the.
Yep. Right.
So the number, the first number you're reading.
She wanted me to read it first, right?
We wanted to amend it, we'll amend it first.
Okay.
And then we'll bring it in.
All right.
Councilman Delaco in.
Okay, all right.
You want to? I, I have to ask your advice and guidance.
It's not the cleanest way to do it, but the bottom line when you're all done, hopefully, it presumes that the budget that's being amended gets passed before it gets passed, that's the only problem.
So it's a presumption.
So should we? The cleaner way to do it would be that, the main budget and then minus, minus the Senior Center, and then vote the Senior Center.
So he needs to come back.
How about he go for a bribe?
Oh. Thirty-six first, okay, okay. All right. Fair enough.
With the, with the understanding that the Senior Center is not part of.
Which will be stated in the numbers once I read this, because this is minus that. Oh, maybe it's fair enough.
Okay, we're gonna move to the legislation for action, adoption of the FY twenty-six budget minus the Senior Center.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, let's start from scratch. Resolution twenty-five dash thirty-six, adoption of fiscal year twenty twenty-six budget, whereas the town council conducted two public hearings of the fiscal year twenty twenty-six budget on May twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, and May twenty-second, twenty twenty-five, which was continued to June fourth, today, twenty twenty-five, after due notice, was given in the Milford Daily News. And whereas the town council considered the fiscal year twenty twenty-six budget on a departmental basis and by vote so determined the size of appropriation for each department on June fourth, twenty twenty-five, now therefore be it moved and voted to adopt said general fund budget, water enterprise fund budget, sewer enterprise fund budget, solid waste enterprise fund budget, and stormwater enterprise fund budget as set out in the fiscal year twenty twenty-six. Voting document, which was revised as of June fourth, twenty twenty-five, the total appropriation of one hundred and sixty-three million, four hundred and thirty-one thousand and sixty-eight dollars, of which one hundred and forty-five million, four hundred and sixty-four thousand, three hundred and eighty-six, which excludes the council on aging budget in the amount of five hundred and seventy-one thousand and sixty-three dollars, be voted in a separate resolution, is to be raised and appropriated, and the balance transferred from the enterprise fund revenues to be appropriated as follows. Water fees, enterprise fund, eight million, one hundred and thirty-one thousand, three hundred and forty-seven dollars. Sewer fees, enterprise fund, five million, five hundred and forty-seven thousand, eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Solid waste fees, enterprise fund, two million, nine hundred and fifty-nine thousand, three hundred and fourteen dollars. Solid waste retained earnings, enterprise fund, two hundred thousand dollars, and stormwater fees, enterprise fund, one million, one hundred and twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and fifty-two dollars, for a total enterprise fund of seventeen million, nine hundred and sixty-six thousand, six hundred and eighty-one. This resolution should become effective according to the provisions of the Town of Franklin Home Room Charter.
Move Resolution twenty-five dash thirty-six.
Second.
Motion on the second, discussion on the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to amend. On the FY twenty-six voting document, I would like to make the motion to amend to remove the budget for line items six ninety and six ninety-one.
Is there a second? No second. Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, the vote will come on the motion to approve Resolution twenty-five dash thirty-six. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries.
I'm gonna recuse myself.
Get out of here. Get out of here.
Tell her you're not one.
Okay. Now, now we will move through Resolution twenty-five dash thirty-seven.
Correct.
Clerk will read the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, here we go again. Resolution twenty-five dash thirty-seven, amendment to fiscal year twenty twenty-six budget, whereas the town council adopted fiscal year twenty twenty-six budget on June fourth, twenty twenty-five, now therefore be it moved and voted to amend said fiscal year twenty twenty-six budget from one hundred and sixty-three million, four hundred and sixty-one thousand and sixty-eight dollars to one hundred and sixty-four million, two thousand, one hundred and thirty-one dollars, as outlined below. Appropriate the, appropriate the council on aging general fund budget in the amount of five hundred and seventy-one thousand and sixty-three dollars. Total. Total appropriation, original, $163,431,68. Change, $571,063. Amended to $164,2,2,131. Raise appropriate, $145,464,386, for a change of $571,063, for an amendment of $146,35,449. This resolution should become effective according to the provisions of the Town of Franklin Home Rule Charter.
Move Resolution 25-37.
Second. Motion and a second. Discussion on the motion. Seeing no further discussion, the vote will come on the motion to approve Resolution Majority votes required. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Eight, one, recusal, sir.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on, the next item on the agenda is Resolution 25-21. Salary schedule, full-time elected official, town clerk. Clerk will read the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Resolution 25-21. Salary schedule for the full-time elected official. A resolution amending Appendix A, Chapter 4, on the Code of Town of Franklin, entitled Salary Schedule, Full-Time Elected Official, be resolved by the Franklin Town Council. In Appendix A, Salary Schedule, Full-Time Elected Official, Chapter 4 of the Code of Town of Franklin, is amended as follows. Appendix A, Salary Schedule, Full-Time Elected Official, Office, Town Clerk, incumbent salary, previous, $111,366. Fiscal year 26, salary, $114,150. Finance Committee action met on May 1st, 2025, was unanimously approved. This resolution is effective for the fiscal year beginning on July 1st, 2025.
Move Resolution 25-21.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion, Jamie?
Just that, just for the folks that are watching for the first time, the elected official salary is in the town bylaws and town code, and so it requires a vote every year with the cola for all the staff, just for the town clerk.
Thank you. Further discussion? Council, call me a ledger.
Mr. Chairman, just for the public's clarification, the proposed cola for the town clerk is the exact same cola that we've now approved for all other staff, correct?
That's correct. That's correct.
Okay, so as a matter of fairness, then we're trying to keep it equitable.
Yep. That is correct.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, the vote will come on the motion to approve Resolution 25-21. Again, majority votes required. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bylaw amendment 25-936, a bylaw to amend the Code of the Town of Franklin at Chapter 73, Departmental Revolving Funds, EV Charging Stations. This is the first reading. Clerk will read the bylaw amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Bylaw amendment 25-936, amendment to the Departmental Revolving Funds, a bylaw to amend the Code of Town of Franklin at Chapter 73, Departmental Revolving Funds by adding a new authorized revolving fund, electric vehicle charging stations revolving fund. Being enacted by the Franklin Town Council, that Chapter, that Chapter 73 of the Code of Town of Franklin is amended at Section 73-5, Authorized Revolving Funds, to add a new subsection G, Electric Vehicle Charging Station Revolving Fund, by adding the following language as set out below. G, Charging Station Revolvings Fund, one, fund name, there shall be a separate revolving fund called the Electrical Vehicle Charging Station Revolving Fund for the use of the Public Facilities Department. Two, revenues, the comptroller shall establish the Electrical Vehicle Charging Station Revolving Fund as a separate account and credit to the fund, all revenues generated from the imposition of fees for the use of the town and school charging stations to defray the cost of utilities, maintenance, and other associated expenses in said charging stations. Three, purposes and expenditures during each fiscal year, the Public Facilities Director may incur liabilities against and spend monies from the Electrical Vehicle Charging Station Revolving Fund for costs related to the charging stations. Four, fiscal years, the Electrical Vehicle Charging Station Revolving Fund shall operate for fiscal years that begin on and after July 1st of 2025. This bylaw amendment shall become effective on and after July 1st of 2025.
Move bylaw amendment 25-936 to a second reading.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion, Jamie?
Yeah, few, Mr. Chairman, this is a proposal for a new revolving fund. We haven't set up one in a long time, but this is for the EV charging stations. The second resolution is for the rate. So for those that have been charging while we've been installing them throughout the community, at the schools, at the DBW, in the municipal building, library, and all the other spots.
You're welcome.
You're welcome, but, but the free days are over. Now you're going to have to pay, and now it'll be 35 cents per kilowatt, and so we're going to use the revolving fund to be able to pay all the bills. It's just a lot easier than going through the operating budget with local receipts. This is one of those that is rare and unique. We have very few revolving funds compared to other communities, but this is one where the finance facilities and myself all thought this was probably the best practice.
Thank you, Jamie. Question?
So just to...
Just identify name and...
Mike, Mike D'Angelo, Director of Facilities, Town of Franklin. So we came up with this, we cart, real quick. So we...
Simon Glenn.
We pay between 22 and 26 cents a kilowatt for electricity. We're going to be char, so we're going to be making a profit at 35 cents a kilowatt. We have 24 Level 2 charging spots in Franklin at all the buildings Jamie mentioned. We're installing 18 spots of Level 3 fast charging, which will charge your car in 20 minutes, full charge, full electric car, even less if you're doing a hybrid. These 18 spots that are put, being put in, and this is kind of the cool thing about it is national grid incentive, money off the top, is giving us $1,320,000 as an incentive for those 18 spots. We're paying $30,000 as our portion.
That's a deal.
I love grid. And the last thing is, just to put things into perspective, the Tesla chargers up in the Village Plaza currently charge 37 cents for their fast chargers, so we're under them just a little bit. And our chargers are actually open to any car, not just Teslas, because that still is an issue. That's all I got.
Yes.
Too bad you left the cars, they're going to be gone.
Further discussion?
Answer my questions.
Okay. Seeing no further discussion, the vote will come on the motion to move bylaw amendment 25-936 to a second reading. A majority votes required. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bylaw amendment 25-937, a bylaw to amend the Code of the Town of Franklin at Chapter 82, fees municipal service, EV charging stations. First reading, clerk will read the bylaw amendment.
You said 931?
937.
Am I missing something? Oh, I'm a dummy. It's right here, sorry. I moved it ahead, just Jamie said that was the price. All right, sorry about that. Bylaw amendment 25-937, you can tell it's getting late. Amendment to Municipal Service Fees, Vehicle Charging Stations, a bylaw to amend the Code of Town of Franklin at Chapter 82, fees municipal service by adding a new service fee, Electrical Vehicle Charging Station. Being enacted by the Franklin Town Council, the Chapter 82 of the Code of Town of Franklin is amended at Section 82-6, Schedule Service Fee Schedule, Subsection A, Administration by adding the existing language to a new fee, Electric Vehicle Charging Station, as set up below. Section 82-6, Schedule Service Fees, Administration, Service Fee, Electrical Vehicle Charging Station, rate at 35 cents per kilowatt hour. This bylaw amendment shall become effective on and after July 1st of 2025.
Move bylaw amendment 25-937 to a second reading.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion.
All good.
I think you answered those questions. Any other further discussion from the council? Seeing none, the vote will come on the motion to move bylaw amendment 25-937 to a second reading. A majority votes required. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution 25-23, Snow and Ice Transfer of Funds. Clerk will read the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Resolution 25-23, Snow and Ice Transfer of Funds. The purpose is to transfer $200,000 to the Snow and Ice Stabilization Fund created by Resolution 24-32 pursuant to match general law. Chapter 40, Section 5B, as follows. Transfer to Snow and Ice Stabilization Account R24-32. Source is Snow and Ice Fiscal Year 25 Budget, in the amount of $200,000. The FinCom actions who met on May 1st, 2025, voted to pass this unanimously. This is a motion be it moved and voted by the town council that the sum of $200,000 be transferred from the General Fund Snow and Ice Budget Fiscal Year 25 to the Snow and Ice Stabilization Account R24-32. This resolution should become effective according to the provisions of the Town of Franklin Home Rule Charter.
Move Resolution 25-23.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion, Jamie?
So we had a little leftover snow and ice money from this year, and you know, one of the reforms that all of you supported was around snow and ice with the help of Natalie and George at the FinCom. And so with a little extra money, I think we're up to three quarters of a million dollars in that account in case we ever have a really bad winter again. And just keep in mind that the entire snow and ice budget was used this year except for $200,000. So think of that winter we just had and how much money we still spent. That's why we have this emergency fund, because someday we're going to get pummeled with something. And putting this money away in that stabilization account is good financial practice. This actually does, and it did come up at our bond rate hearing this year.
Thank you, Jamie. Further discussion from the council? Seeing none, the vote will come on the motion to approve Resolution 25-23. A majority votes required. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Your ayes again, aye. Resolution 25-35, Appropriation of Funds from Receipts Reserved to Road Repairs. Clerk will read the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Resolution 25-35, an appropriation for funds from receipts reserved to road repairs. Total amount requested, $7,928.70. The purpose is to appropriate $7,928.70 from the receipts reserved for appropriation to the TNC Ride Assessment Fund for the purposes of road repairs. Motion be it moved and voted by the town council that the sum of $7,928.70 be appropriated for the purposes indicated above from the receipts reserved to the TNC Ride Assessment Fund. This resolution should become effective according to the provisions of the Town of Franklin Home Rule Charter.
Move Resolution 25-35.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion, Jamie?
This is going to turn into like the Peg Access money every year, where we have to vote on the rideshare money from the state, and I don't know how much road work we're going to be able to do, but I know Kathy Morad will pay a bill on a sidewalk repair or a road repair with the $7,000. This is for our share by state law of money that comes in from people who use Uber and Lyft in Franklin, and then so there's a surcharge on there, and it comes back to the Town of Franklin, and we're using it to actually repair a road project.
Thank you, Jamie. Further discussion from the council?
I think I'm going to start charging the fee for everything.
Seeing none, the vote will come on the motion to approve Resolution 25-35. Again, a majority votes required. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That was much better. Resolution 25-25, Community Preservation Fund, FY26, Annual Appropriations and Reservations. Clerk will read the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Resolution 25-25, Community Preservation Fund, Fiscal Year 26, Annual Appropriations and Reservations. The purpose is to appropriate and reserve from the Community Preservation Fund Fiscal Year 2026, estimated revenues in the following amounts, as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee for required reserve accounts and administrative expenses and other expenses in fiscal year 2026, with each item to be considered a separate appropriation in the total amount of $1,910,412. Source, Fiscal Year 26, Estimated Revenues for Historic Preservation Reserve in the amount of $191,041. Fiscal Year 26, Estimated Reserves for Community Housing Reserves, $191,041. Fiscal Year 26, Estimated Revenues for Open Space and Recreation Reserve, $191,041. Fiscal Year 26, Estimated Revenues for Budgeted Reserve, $1,241,768. Fiscal Year 26, Estimated Revenues for Administrative Expenses, $95,521, for a total of $1,910,412. Community Preservation Committee Actions, who met on May 5th, 2025, had a unanimous vote. Mr. Chairman, motion be it moved and voted by the town council that the sum of $1,910,412 be appropriated or reserved as indicated above in fiscal year 2026 from the Community Preservation Fiscal Year 2026, estimated revenues in the amounts recommended by the Franklin Community Preservation Committee, with each to be considered a separate appropriation. This resolution should become effective according to the provisions of the Town of Franklin Home Rule Charter.
Move Resolution 25-25.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion, Jamie?
This was the recommended budget framework for the year from the Community Preservation Committee. Anticipate 1.9 million in revenue. Each of those categories are required by law for historic preservation, community housing, and open space. And the administrative expenses is 5% of the fund, and then everything else is at-large budgeted reserve. So it's just the basic framework of the budget.
Thank you, Jamie. Discussion from the council? Seeing none, the vote will come on the motion to approve Resolution 25-25. Again, majority votes required. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution 25-26, FY26, Community Preservation Appropriation of Funds Capital. Clerk will read the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Resolution 25-26, FY26, Community Preservation Appropriation of Funds Capital. Purpose is to appropriate from the Community Preservation Reserves, available funds in the following amounts as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee or Community Preservation Projects in fiscal year 2026, with each item to be considered a separate appropriation in the total amount of $912,790.50. Source is the Historic Preservation Reserve for the purposes of repair of the 1949 antique truck, $20,000. Historic Preservation Reserve for repair, main hall at the library, $80,000. Open Space and Recreation, consultant to update the open space plan to meet the new ADA requirements and portion, $9,419.15. Open Space and Recreation, Phase 1 Elementary Complex's Playground Expansion, $181,623. The budget reserve, soccer field wall padding replacement, $40,000. Budgeted reserve, consultant to update open space plan to meet the new ADA access requirements, remainder, $5,180.85. Budgeted reserve, Maple Hill Debt Service, $252,818. Budgeted reserve for Schmitz Farm Debt Service of $323,750, for a total of $912,790.50. Community Preservation Committee Action on the May 5th, 2025 meeting was unanimous. Motion be it moved and voted by the town council that the sum of $912,790.50 be appropriated from the Community Preservation Reserves in the amount... the Community Preservation Reserves in the amounts and for projects indicated above for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six, with each item to be considered a separate appropriation. This resolution shall become effective according to the provisions of the Town of Franklin Home Rule Charter.
Move resolution twenty-five dash twenty-six.
Second.
Motion and second discussion, Jamie.
This is the Slater Projects that was approved by the Community Preservation Committee last month. I'm happy to answer any questions on the projects. Obviously, most of this, just to highlight, is the Schmidt Farm and Maple Hill Open Space purchases. I do want to note that the one hundred and eighty-one thousand six hundred and twenty-three are part of the redistricting project for the schools, for the elementary school playground expansion complexes. I do want to note, just for the record, which is important for the allowable use, those playgrounds are available and open to the public around the clock during non-school hours. So when you have playgrounds and fields, which I think most of our stuff for the schools are anyway, you then are eligible for these funds. So I know this is helping the school department a great deal with getting the redistricting done. And also the soccer field wall padding is another classic example of that. The ADA access requirements is actually a request from the state as to why they're holding up our open space plan. And we are really proud that they supported the repair in the main hall of the library. Some of you may remember, there was a gutter problem with some ice up in the corner and it's got to be repaired. And, you know, lo and behold, when we got donated the nineteen forty-nine antique truck, there were some repairs around the corner. So hopefully these funds will go toward repairing that, which is, I think, a part of the Memorial Day Parade and some of the other stuff that we do in town. So it's about as quick as I can do it.
Thank you, Jamie. Further discussion from the council? Councilor Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, through you, the town administrator, as well as the community at large, this is really such a wonderful thing. I think, Jamie, you can agree that back in the day when we hadn't actually approved the Community Preservation Act, that once we finally did, we could actually tap these funds. This is such a great use for these funds. It's just kind of sad, and I know I'm bringing back memories, that we hadn't tapped into it sooner.
This year is the five-year anniversary.
Is it really?
Of the voters. This November, five-year anniversary. So we're putting out, trying to produce a special report just to kind of give the community a window, Councilor Jones, to what you're saying. All of this stuff would have never been done without CPA. So it's great stuff.
Thank you, Jamie. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilor Jones. Councilor Plegrey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's just what I was going to be saying, that, Councilor Jones, I just want people to realize, this isn't money that's coming out of our budget or that in any way whatsoever. We accepted the CPA and all of this money that we're getting now is just a gift to us when you think about it. It's wonderful. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Plegrey. Councilor Cormier-Legger.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To the town administrator, Jamie, on page four, I just was, I know it's not part of the amount we're voting on, but can you provide some clarity to the hundred and five thousand two forty-five that's being considered for the Franklin United Methodist Church?
Yeah. So, great question. So I know it was probably in the memo, my bad. So the Methodist Church, there was a project for historic preservation that was approved by the CPC after a long discussion relative to some exterior improvements of the Methodist Church. The reason why it's not on here for approval tonight, you just started bringing, the reason why it's not on is because the town attorney and I need to make sure that the entire council is aware of a Supreme Court case that revolves around places of worship with CPA money. It is an allowable use, but there are criteria. The CPA committee did have an extensive discussion around it and did move forward with it. But you're essentially creating, in some ways, you know, a new allowable use. And we wanted to make sure that the council, as the final authority, has the full picture of the Supreme Court case from Actin to make sure you're comfortable moving forward with that project. I figured by the time we got here tonight, that's probably going to be an hour-long overview. That's a very, very in-depth discussion, so we didn't want to do that tonight at like eleven o'clock.
So that's a future thing.
That's a future meeting. And they did reshape the proposal down to lesser money due to the CPA's recommendation. So we'll provide that in a couple, in a meeting, might be in June or July. Working it out with the folks at the Methodist.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilor Cormier-Legger. Any other counselors? Seeing, oh, Councilor Deloco.
Jamie.
You guys are here. I think I told you it wasn't tonight. Okay.
I was just ready for a text.
I knew you were here for a reason.
It's a Patrick.
No, that's okay. That's okay. Are we, are we, did you say this is going to rebuild the forty-nine fire truck?
Yeah. The antique, the antique truck. It was the first fire truck we ever got. And it was donated from a gentleman in Bellingham who had it.
And listen, I just, I'm going to be retired and I have rebuilt the fifty-one, so I mean, I'm walking to hell.
Well, here nineteen forty-nine is very different than fifty-one.
Yeah. I don't know. Yeah.
Any further discussion?
I've got to prep.
Seeing that.
You were born?
Shut up. Yes, as a matter of fact, it was a very good year. Resolution twenty-five dash twenty-six, the vote will come on the motion to approve. A majority votes required. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution twenty-five dash twenty-four, transfer of funds from Water Enterprise Fund Retained Earnings to Waterline Project. Clerk will read the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Resolution twenty-five dash twenty-four, appropriation transfer of funds from Water Enterprise Fund Retained Earnings to Waterline Project. Total amount requested, one million two hundred and fifty-two thousand two hundred and thirty-one dollars and eighty-seven cents. Purpose is to appropriate the transfer of one million two hundred and fifty-two thousand two hundred and thirty-one dollars and eighty-seven cents from Water Enterprise Fund Retained Earnings to the Waterline Capital Project authorized under resolution nineteen dash zero five, dated January thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen. Motion being moved and voted by the town council that the sum of one million two hundred and fifty-two thousand two hundred and thirty-one dollars and eighty-seven cents be appropriated from the transfer from Water Enterprise Fund Retained Earnings to the Waterline Capital Line Project authorized under resolution nineteen dash zero five, dated January thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen. This resolution shall become effective according to the provisions of the Town of Franklin Home Rule Charter.
Move resolution twenty-five dash twenty-four.
Second.
Motion and second discussion, Jamie.
So this is the final payment of what feels like a twenty-year water maintenance replacement program over the last five years. We won't have to borrow, won't have to pay any interest, just paying with retained earnings, which is essentially free cash for the Water Enterprise Fund. It's unspent money through the water department. I just got to send a huge shout out to Brutus, Doug Martin, Mike Maglio of our engineering team. Y'all appropriate, authorized this like before the pandemic and everything just went, we all know how. And the fact that they were able to get this done on budget within the five or six years, really, and all the additional work that they did from the ARPA fund, just shows you what an incredible team they are. And thanks to Mike and Doug and Brutus for all their incredible work and the whole water team.
Thank you, Jamie. Further discussion from the council? Seeing none, the vote will come on the motion to approve resolution twenty-five dash twenty-four. A majority votes required. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution twenty-five dash thirty-four. Not putting these in numerical order. Trying to confuse me?
I don't know. Maybe we were confused too. I think there was a lot of things coming in and out.
Yeah. Resolution twenty-five dash thirty-four. Appropriation of funds from receipts reserved for PFAS remediation. Clerk will read the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to waive the reading.
Second.
Motion and second to waive the reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Move resolution twenty-five dash thirty-four.
Second.
Motion and a second discussion, Jamie. Quick summary.
DOR put out a new bulletin that we have to have a remediation fund. The good news is, this is all money that is coming from the PFAS lawsuits. So you know how much I hate this because it costs so much money and citizens have a better chance to do money with other stuff, but it is really good news that we are starting to get the funds in from the lawsuits. And this money eventually will help offset the cost of the PFAS remediation plants that we have to build. I would note that the federal government did delay the PFAS compliance by two or three more years, but the state has not yet. So we have to wait for the state to do that. But it is good, it is good news that we're starting to get funds in to pay those bills.
Thank you, Jamie. Further discussion from the council? Seeing none, the vote will come on the motion to approve resolution twenty-five dash thirty-four. Again, a majority votes required. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Zoning bylaw amendment twenty-five dash nine thirty-five, a zoning bylaw amendment to the Code of the Town of Franklin, Act, Chapter one eighty-five, Section twenty-one, Flood Plain District. This is the second reading. Clerk will read the bylaw amendment.
Motion to waive the reading.
Second.
Motion and second to waive the reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Move zoning by, move zoning bylaw amendment twenty-five dash nine thirty-five.
Second.
Motion and second discussion, Jamie. That was a three-page document.
Four pages. The final vote on what FEMA requires us to do to get federal mitigation money. That's all everybody needs to know.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Yeah.
Seeing none, the vote will come on the motion to approve zoning bylaw amendment twenty-five dash nine thirty-five, a two-thirds roll call, majority votes required. Clerk will call a roll.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Cormier-Legger.
Yes.
Sheridan.
Yes.
Chandler.
Yes.
Vengello.
Yes.
Plegrey.
Yes.
Hemblin.
Yes.
Jones, yes. Vice Chair.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Nine zero, sir.
Motion carries. Resolution twenty-five dash thirty-two, cable funds in support of peg service and programming per Mass General Law, Chapter forty-four, subsection fifty-three, F and three-quarters. Clerk will read the resolution.
Motion to waive the reading.
Second. All those in favor of waiving the reading signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Where are we here? Oh, twenty-five thirty-two. Move resolution twenty-five dash thirty-two.
Second.
Motion and second discussion. Seeing none, the vote will come on the motion to approve resolution twenty-five dash thirty-two. A majority votes required. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Finally, the last one.
Two.
Sorry. Resolution twenty-five dash thirty-three, acceptance of gifts, Senior Center, fifteen hundred and ten dollars. Clerk will read the resolution.
That was wishful thinking. Resolution twenty-five dash thirty-three, acceptance of gifts for the Senior Center. Whereas the Franklin Senior Center has received generous donations in the total amount of one thousand five hundred and ten dollars to be used at the discretion of the department as follows. Senior Center, one thousand five hundred and ten dollars donations to be applied at the discretion of the Senior Center through the Council on Agent Gift Fund to provide services and programs to senior citizens in the Franklin community. Donor information is included in the June fourth, two thousand and twenty-five Town Council Meeting Agenda Packet. Now therefore be resolved that the Town Council of the Town of Franklin on behalf of the Senior Center gratefully accepts these generous donations to be used at the discretion of the department for the purposes noted above. This resolution shall become effective according to the provisions of the Town of Franklin Home Rule Charter.
Move resolution twenty-five dash thirty-three.
Second.
Motion and second discussion. Just a huge thank you for the continued support of our Senior Center, veterans, police, fire from the community continue to give their local businesses, everyone. So thank you. Okay, the vote will come on the motion to approve resolution twenty-five dash thirty-three. Again, majority votes required. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now.
Yes.
The last one. Resolution twenty-five dash twenty-two, expenditure limits for FY two thousand and twenty-six on departmental revolving funds established by Franklin Town Code, Chapter seventy-three as provided in Mass General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three and a half as amended. Clerk will read the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is resolution twenty-five dash twenty-two, expenditure limits for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six on departmental revolving funds established by the Franklin Town Council, Chapter seventy-three, as provided in Mass General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three and a half as amended. Whereas the Franklin Town Council has adopted a bylaw establishing a chapter in the Franklin Town Code, Chapter seventy-three, Departmental Revolving Funds, as provided by Mass General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three and a half as amended, further provides the municipality's legislative body shall annually set the expenditure limit for each revolving fund established under the local bylaw. Now, therefore be moved and voted that the Franklin Town Council hereby sets the expenditure limit for each revolving fund established under Franklin Town Code, Chapter seventy-three, Departmental Revolving Funds for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six as follows. Section five B, Senior Center Activities Program, one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Section five C, Senior Center Supportive Day Program, one hundred thousand dollars. Section five D, Use of Facilities Account, one hundred thousand dollars. Section five E, Fire Department Rescue Training Program, ten thousand dollars. And section five F, Community Policing Programs, twenty-five thousand dollars. The Finance Committee actions on May fifth, May first, two thousand and twenty-five were unanimous. This resolution shall become effective according to the provisions of the Town of Franklin Home Rule Charter.
Move resolution twenty-five dash twenty-two.
Second.
Motion and second discussion, Jamie.
By statute, we just have to reauthorize these each year. No limit changes, no category change.
Okay. That was the question. Any further questions? Councilor Cormier-Legger.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jamie, these are all funds that people make donations to as opposed to funds that get allocated to us? Is that true?
Let's give the town attorney a shot here. He's been sitting here all night. He wants to show.
Because some of them, and I only ask because some of them I've never heard of before.
Because they go into existing, ongoing programs where there's money coming in, money going out. Otherwise, the money will go into general revenues and not be appropriated back. So it's supposed to be a streamlined mechanism, but the legislature in their wisdom has made it not so much.
Right. So I understand that they're separate accounts, but are they all, in fact, ones that only operate based on donations or do some of these?
No, some of them are fees.
Fees.
Like the activities, yeah, like the supportive day and the activities are the two accounts, two of the accounts that offset a significant portion of the Senior Center budget. So the budget, instead of being, say, seven hundred and fifty thousand in the budget, is actually only five hundred and seventy-five thousand. So these fees here go, the fees that they're collecting go into these accounts and then those staff costs, personnel costs, expense costs, activity costs, you know, food, you know, supplies, all that stuff come out of that. So it's self-sustaining.
I think my next question, sorry, Mr. Chairman, would just, would just be like, why only these five get listed? What about all of the other accounts that we do?
It's a great, well, I will give Jeff and the previous treasurer comptroller a lot of credit. A lot of communities have very fragmented revolving fee structures. That has been something because most of our revenues, the overwhelming majority, go into the general fund, like Mark said. These were all set up prior to me getting here. And I think at some point, there was a logic with Karen Alves and probably the former fire chief and the police chief over these, over these, over these things.
Okay.
And I, I don't really know the entire logic of it at the time. It does make it a little easier for the departments to have that revenue come in for that fee and then go out, because then they'd have to wait for a whole entire year approval process from the council to appropriate that money. If it went into general fund, it goes in the local receipts and then you, like tonight's budget, you'd have to appropriate it. So it gives them just a little bit more, it's basically more efficient.
Carrie, did you want to add something?
Yep, Carrie Bertoni CFO, and I don't mean to delay you or make this more confusing, but you just approved a revol, a new revolving fund tonight. So on June eighteenth, I'm gonna have to do this again just for that new revolving fund. I couldn't do it tonight because he hadn't approved it.
I got you.
Requires a second.
Yeah, no, I got you.
Okay, I just wanted to mention.
No, thank you though.
You're welcome.
I appreciate the clarification. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any? I'll be quick. Just to complete this, just to complete the picture, those, those limits aren't even set in stone. You could, there's a mechanism for increasing them. If, if a particular department expanded up to the limit, you can then get an increase.
Right.
Okay. Any further discussion? Councilor Jones.
Just a, just a quick note, um, where's five thirty, where's seven thirty-five A? Council on Agent.
Seven thirty-five A?
Yeah, five A. Is that not part of this?
Oh, it probably got repealed.
Oh, okay, so I was noticing.
I don't know which one that is, but it probably at one point in history got repealed.
Any further discussion?
Hey.
Seeing none, the vote will come on the motion to approve Resolution twenty-five dash twenty-two. A majority votes required. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Town Administrators report.
Uh, the only thing I have, Mr. Chairman, is I just wanna obviously thank all of you, thank the entire staff, uh, thank the school committee, the Joint Budget Subcommittee, the superintendent, the whole school staff. Obviously, this has been a marathon year, uh, twelve months, maybe longer, fifteen months of budget discussions. Um, you know, despite the outcome that we didn't want this week, um, you know, I think, um, you know, I think you see the staff camaraderie, you see all the camaraderie among all of you. We thank you for all your support and thank the entire team for their incredibly hard work. Um, and the last thing I'll say is thank all the advocates, all the folks that are still here, that went through this long budget meeting tonight. Thanks to all the residents who have, who've put their time in. Um, and just moving forward, I think, um, I subscribe to Ken Ojiboo's, um, comment earlier, um, there needs to be a go-forward strategy. Um, I think the Joint Budget Subcommittee is it. Um, I think, um, for those that are unaware of the reforms that the town has done, um, we have reformed virtually every department in this organization in the last five or six years. I implore people to go read the budget narratives and look that stuff up. I do wanna, I've done it all year and I'll do it one more time as we close out the budget season. Um, I do wanna thank the school committee and the superintendent and their staff. Um, it's no secret, um, I had to be the guy for a long time to, um, hold people accountable. Um, I'm the one standing by myself, uh, oftentimes on an island, um, that's my job, I love it. Um, and I'm very grateful for their partnership, I'm very grateful for their leadership. I think the school committee and, uh, Lucas and the whole staff, um, they've done an amazing job over the last two years on redistricting, on fees, and I also wanna give them a shout out, um, COLA equity. This came up a little bit tonight, um, in a different context, um, but I know that MOUs have been exercised with all of our collective bargaining units. I know we're hopeful to make those permanent this month. Um, but to Councilor Plaguey's comment earlier, and I hope it gives her confidence as well, um, I do give the school committee and the superintendent and the whole staff an enormous amount of credit after what happened a few years ago. Um, and I give the teachers union a lot of credit and all of our unions. Um, I think, you know, sometimes we see the negatives, but sometimes those negatives turn into real positives. And I think we're all gonna learn a lot from what happened this year, but one of the things we have learned is that our staff and our administration and school administration and our committees are all committed to working really well together and listening to each other and trying to do what we can to manage costs and also try to achieve the goals of the community. Um, I can't speak enough volumes for what they've done. I had to be the unpopular guy a few years ago who had to stand up here and had to write a narrative on some issues that were uncomfortable for the community. It was not the easiest thing for me to do, but it was the right thing to do, and I think the community and the school district and all of us are better for it. Um, and I just can't thank them enough for dealing with me, um, for still working with me, for still talking to me, uh, meeting with me on a bi-weekly basis. Amy, Tina and Lucas and I meet every two weeks. Um, this, Mr. Chairman, is what I think you envisioned when we built this building and brought everybody together. Um, you and I happened to bump into the superintendent out in the parking lot, um, today, um, and you don't do that and you don't get to communicate and connect if you're not here in the building together. And that's a powerful thing that is very, very strong in Franklin. And despite how disappointed we are with the outcome and how trying that these times are gonna be, I do wanna assure everybody like Lucas and everybody did earlier, we are gonna be okay. We are absolutely gonna be okay. Our school district, while we can't do everything, are unquestionably an elite, an excellent school district. Our athletic programs, all the programs academically, we have graduation this week. Um, this is a huge celebratory moment for this community, it's gonna be a fantastic celebration. I just hope that everybody can keep the optimism because I know for myself, I know all of you, know how hard I work, Amy, all of our staff and all of the schools, unbelievable amounts of effort and time go into this, and, uh, I'm very grateful for their, uh, partnership and all of this. And I do think that, um, we have the ability now to move forward, um, after many decades of challenges on these issues with development and population and, and enrollment spikes and decreases. Um, and even though that the vote didn't come out this week the way we wanted to, I still think that this community is extraordinarily well-prepared to move into the future and have conversations that we need to have. So I just wanted to, uh, offer that, um, kind of close out, um, on the budget season. I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jamie. Okay, uh, Subcommittee reports, I don't think any Subcommittee met. Uh, got this, it's the only one I'm ever sure of whether it's met or not. Uh, future agenda items, Councilor Cormier Ledger?
Nothing at this time.
Councilor Chandler?
Nothing at this time.
Councilor Plaguey?
Nothing at this time.
Counselor Sherman?
Uh, as far as the past is concerned, we don't discuss that, but that's already the law, as you probably begin, okay? And, uh, can we discuss by, uh, time limit for meetings?
Oh.
Time limits to meetings.
Oh, time limit. I'm sorry, I missed it. Well, we got four minutes. Uh, Counselor Frangello?
Yeah, the Franklin Food Pantry has, uh, expanded its services and has a whole bunch of new offerings. It's been a little while since they come before us. I know that they're willing to speak to us again if we're able to find time on a future agenda.
Sure, Jamie and I will look at future agenda, we'll talk to Tina about committees.
That'd be great, thanks.
Good. Counselor Hamblin?
Nothing at this time.
Counselor Jones?
No, sir.
Counselor Delarco?
No, I kinda agree with, uh, Counselor Frangello. I rode by the Franklin Food Pantry the other day, it was freaking, it was jammed. I mean, it was, it was out the wa, out the wall, so the services are crazy, so I, I definitely agree with Counselor Frangello.
Good. Okay, Counselor comments. Counselor Sherman?
Nothing.
Counselor Frangello?
Uh, things to celebrate, Pork Fest Saturday, Strawberry Stroll next Friday. Uh, come out, meet your neighbors, say hi, smile, enjoy the weather.
Counselor Hamblin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I wanna thank all the department heads, all the town staff, um, the school district, everyone that's been involved in this, um, pretty crazy budget ser, series of, uh, of budget.
It's late, it's okay.
I know. Season, year, I don't know. Um, I was gonna say nightmare, but I, I can't say that.
Could.
I could, yeah, but it, it's like, I, you know, I just want everybody to start to think about, like, how do we move forward? We've already said that, but, um, and, and we're here together, right? And so we're gonna move forward. And I believe that Franklin can be better and will be better and we can love better. I really believe that. Um, and there is also the farmer's market that starts on Friday and, um, that's always a lot of fun, there's music and everybody, there's gonna be beer and mead and wine, so everybody can, we can all go have fun and, um, and love each other better. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Hamblin. Counselor Cormier Ledger?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I too wanna say thank you to everybody, particularly the leadership team of One Franklin, who I don't think get anywhere near the accolades that they deserve for a, a passionate group of mostly moms that just like never let up on this issue. And even though they, it didn't get the outcome they wanted, uh, they put in hundreds and hundreds of hours, uh, for something they believe in to help this community and, um, I very, very much appreciate everything that, that they did. My condolences to the Patel family, um, that unbelievable loss, um, and several lives were destroyed in that car accident, not just those that were, um, lost. So I, my thoughts and prayers with all the families affected. Um, and on a happy note, um, happy pride and thank you to everybody that came out, um, which seems like a year ago, but it was just this past weekend, um, to the, uh, pride flag raising ceremony that we did here at Town Hall. It was great to, it was great to have a good crowd and, um, see lots of, lots of smiling faces knowing that, um, Franklin is safe and welcoming and people really do appreciate it. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Cormier Ledger. Counselor Chandler?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Obviously, I'd like to thank everyone that put time and effort into this overall, but mostly, um, kinda, I'm sorry for the people and the families that we had to lay off tonight. You gotta remember them, 'cause there, uh, there are also some casualties of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Chandler. Counselor Plaguey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also would like to thank all of the department heads and the school department and all that, uh, this was a very long season and you put in a lot of extra hours and we certainly do appreciate it. We appreciate it. And, um, I too am so sorry for the Patel family. It was a horrible tragedy, but it's also a tragedy for the, um, Blanchard family, you know, that, that are going. So we have to pray for both families, okay? And I think that's it for right now, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Plaguey. Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, again, I'd just like to repeat what's been said countless times tonight is thanking the staff, thanking everybody here tonight, thanking everybody who's worked so hard to make everything work. I'd like to thank the councilors for their countless time and dedication to everything. I know it's been difficult for most of us over the past few months just trying to get the message out and unfortunately we weren't successful with getting the yes vote, but, um, you know, like I said earlier, I know the piece is fit and we can, we can make this work. Together we can do anything. So, Mr. Chairman, um, I appreciate all the hard work that you've put in. Um, I think, uh, you know, I don't think many people have noticed how often you repeated yourself along with Jamie and Lucas. I think they've got it still memorized, they probably go to sleep having nightmares repeating the same thing over and over.
That is true.
So, um, I just wanna thank you all so very much for all the hard work you put in.
Thank you, Counselor Jones. Counselor Delarco?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and obviously thank you to everybody.